The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
All right, I'd like to call the special board meeting to order. First, we have our charter school grant proposals. I'll ask the team to come forward with that. First, I would, oh, sorry, special board meeting, entertain a motion first.
I would move that the charter school grant proposals as presented be approved.
Second?
Thank you. The team is here just to be able to answer any questions that you might have, and I'd like to do quick introductions. Kim Shanick, Jason Johnson, Jen Egomide, and you know, Dr. Ho. The purpose of presenting in front of you tonight is for an ask, and I'm going to turn it over to Kim, who's been managing this work over the last couple of months. But prior to that, I want to make sure that you're aware that both Jason and Jen have spent, I would guess, probably hundreds of hours working on this grant, all in the hopes that we can provide more opportunities to the students of Green Bay Area Public School District. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kim.
Thank you. Thank you. So we are here to request-
Can you make sure you're speaking?
Can Ed hear?
We actually have Ed on the phone, so he needs to be able to hear. Can you hear okay, Ed?
I couldn't hear very well. I can hear you, I can hear you okay now.
Okay.
Otherwise, I could hear, I'm reading along. I could hear.
Okay, all right. So just try to speak into the microphone as much as you can.
Okay, thank you. Sandy has two resolutions that we're requesting the approval and signature of the board. One is for each of the charter school grant proposals. I believe that you've had the memo that provided a summary of what we're asking for. The reason that we're bringing this for you is that we believe that these provide additional educational options for the students in our school district. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? I know you provided a detailed PowerPoint, which, thank you for that. That was very good. And that PowerPoint is specifically, I can't remember now, was for an audience of, of who? Who is that PowerPoint?
Yeah. It was different audiences, so we tweaked it accordingly.
Oh, okay.
But the primary was NWTC and UWGB initially.
Oh, okay. All right. So, yeah, I mean, I'm very excited about this grant proposal. I think it really provides yet another avenue to provide more opportunities for kids, and we've had such great success with the academy, and to be able to expand that and, you know, continue to find places for our kids, I think it's great. And it's just, I think, the other thing that's quite impressive about it is that NWTC and UWGB have jumped on board with it. I think that that makes this grant proposal very competitive. Oh, Andrew?
I've heard a lot from people too, that we have, for example, some Dewey families are there specifically because the project-based learning is what's best for their kids, but there's also families who will say that they're, they feel their students would probably do well in a traditional model or project-based, but it's that little bit, little bit smaller, a lot smaller family setting that really, really works well. So to see another, another option that's going to be a smaller group staying together, that connection's important for a lot of kids. So it's good to see that there'll be more of this, and it seems that to go, to go a little, a little bigger on Dewey seems like that's well researched and should, should work out just fine.
If I could add too, a tremendous amount of work has been done on this, and I think that this, this vision for ensuring that we have multiple places for kids to plug in and replug has been part of a conversation that many have been having for years. And I think that the timing is perfect with what's going on with Turbo Charge, with what's going on in our community around districts of innovation, and that whole notion of creating a pathway for students beginning as early as middle school and having them in a pathway through grade 14, which is a little bit different than I think that anyone has entertained in our area as well. So to have higher ed on board as part of the Turbo Charge efforts and making sure, I think the state just did a nice job for us in providing some legislation so that the transcribe credits or the dual enrollment credits will, will transfer without cost to our kids will be a huge bonus. So we're talking two proposals. One of them is to expand the JADAL, John Dewey Academy Project Based, as you noted, Andrew, and, and also then to also offer a pathway of alternative education for that, that learner who isn't quite plugged into that traditional pathway in grade seven through 14 is, is really an innovative thinking, and so I, I want to thank all of you for all of the work behind that as well. And Jen said now she thinks she can sleep tonight, so, anyway.
If I could add something, please?
Yes, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I agree with what Michelle said, particularly the notion about looking at, going to grade 14. I'm in Elkhorn right now, and I visited a school, a, a very unique project-based school that has brought people back to the public school, brought people into the public school who are, who have been traditionally homeschooling. And I, I think there's some opportunities for us there as well, and that might fit within this. I know that that wasn't something we specifically spoke about, but when I get back to Green Bay, I'm going to share what I learned about that. It, it is a, a public charter school that, that they've got going down here, but I thought they had a very unique approach, just in terms of having an opportunity for those who, you know, as you say, the, the regular, the public experience has not been to their, suited to them. They've done something really, really unique here, and I think we might have an opportunity to, to leverage that with, with this new opportunity that we're looking at as well.
All right.
Lots of thoughts.
At this point, we are, we are providing opportunity for public comment, just on this particular agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board on this particular item? All right, seeing none, is there any other, are there any other questions from board members, Chris?
In my question, seeing we're approving the concept now and the details will be worked out later as to where the location will be, what the breakout of students will be, so maybe middle school kids and high school kids will be separate or together or, I assume that'll have to be worked out.
This is just our approval to apply for the grant.
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
There's two pieces to the resolution, that the DPI is requiring one, approval of submission to the grant, and then for the, for NEW, the approval is also for supporting the concept of the school and granting authority to establish the charter, but there will be a contract coming forward, Dr. Wegner, just like there was with JADAL, that will include all of those details. For the JADAL resolution, it, two parts again, one, approval of supporting the grant, and then approval of expanding the grades, and then the contract will come forward for the board to sign as an addendum to, or amendment to expand the grades. And we're also looking at a potential reconstitution of the governing boards, to have one governing board for both of the charter schools. And that would be also an amendment to the JADAL-
I assume it's not premature. Are you thinking in terms of where the, the sixth and seventh graders and eighth graders will be located? And we've been talking about, well, not talking about, we have to find a new location based on some things that are happening anyway with John Dewey as we know it. Are you thinking in terms of keeping the entire dammit together or find us another location for the middle school youngsters?
I guess it depends on the space where we're located, but ideally, we would like to keep the two programs separate because the middle school program may be a little bit more teacher-directed, so that they can learn and develop the project-based skills before entering into the high school program.
I hope you think that through in terms of location, because we've been talking about West High School, and I would have some concerns about younger middle school kids going over there because of their maturity level and age.
Andrew?
Thank you.
So I guess I just, in response to Dr. Wegner, as far as the, you know, West High School maybe has, has been mentioned about, about John Dewey. I've said at the time of the referendum, I didn't, I didn't support taking a section of West and making it in John Dewey. I'm hoping that we're exploring other alternatives. I realize a range of options is, is good, but I think John Dewey, John Dewey is unique and needs a, needs a unique place. And, you know, buildings come open from, from time to time, and I hope we find the, find the right, the one with the right space that we would own instead of rent.
I'll just mention that we've explored several locations, both within the district and property we already own, property that we don't own but is currently available for sale, and property that's existing in other locations, even on university campuses. So we've, we've been exploring all options.
I just wanted to add that Katie Maloney and I saw your presentation the other night at West, which was great, about these, these grant applications. Can you, can one of you speak a little bit about how this, this pot of money, basically, is also available to private charters and how, I mean, I personally feel it's important that our school district apply for these because that's all tax dollars. And I'd rather see that those tax dollars functioning under the umbrella of public schools where they have to adhere to things that public schools have to adhere to.
Yeah, thank you. So the, the charter grant money that's available is federal money that's given to the states, and the DPI has to decide how to disseminate that money. So each state decides this process that we're going through right now with grant submission and details. There's two different kinds of charters in, in the state of Wisconsin, instrumentalities and non-instrumentalities. Our charter schools are under the umbrella of the Green Bay Area Public School District, and so they're considered instrumentality charter schools. Now, even though they have a contract with the Board of Education that delineates what things would be different and which things would be the same, there are some charter schools in, in the state and other states that are not part of a school district and would be non-instrumentality charter schools. So our proposals are to remain instrumentalities of the school district, which agrees, is an important concept.
All right, take a vote, Sandy?
Maloney? Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf? Ed?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Wegner?
Aye.
Carried seven zero. So thank you again for all your work on this and good luck-
Thank you.
Sleep well, Ted.
Thank you.
All right, I'd entertain the next motion. I just had Noah over there. Noah? Noah, feel free to come have a seat at our table. We have a special board meeting that started at five, so are you here to attend the board meeting? Yeah, go ahead. Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
All right, I move that the American Institutes for Research be awarded the contract for providing hiring services to the district for the principal of Washington Middle School, the amount of approximately $13,850 as presented be approved.
Second?
Go ahead.
Thank you. The American Institute for Research is actually a partner right now with the state of Wisconsin as we look to address the needs in some of our highest need schools across the state, more specifically around the schools in the Big Five. So they're working with us on the whole urban leadership academy. When we look at how to hire a principal and build capacity within our own ranks, we felt it was very important to not just go out, we want to search to make sure that we have the very best and the right principal to critically move school improvement in, in our schools. And I think one of the things that we learned when you go out and look at the body of research is to recognize the importance of the critical role of a principal, and also the fact that principals who lead turnaround schools have a different competency set of skills than perhaps what the kind of principal we've been hiring over the years. I think one of the pieces that really is important about the services that we would be provided is the capacity building, not only for the principal to have that position, it isn't just hiring a principal with a headhunter kind of group, but really looking at what turnaround competencies are needed, and more specifically, the training and support that goes with it. So phase one of, of this opportunity starts with a launch, and that, that consists of a two-day professional development. And I know Vicky, Byer, and John Magus and I actually did a webinar around what this could look like, to just get a flavor for what kinds of opportunities would be talked about, really looking more specifically at that training. First of all, identifying what the research-based best competencies are for that leader, and also the hiring process itself. One of the things that we'll be doing is a full analysis of our current hiring processes to begin with, and then looking more specifically at how to best recruit candidates. I know that we've spent a lot of time in thriving workforce talking about the importance of recruitment and retention, particularly as we go out and try to find people who represent a broader spectrum of folks that represent our student body. So we've spent a lot of time this year working in partnership with the GBEA and also with this, with the centers training with, that John has been very actively engaged in as well. So that would be the first part, is really doing a full, deep analysis of our own processes and building our own capacity within our, our framework and bringing folks to the table. The second piece is really focused in on creating what that profile will look like for Washington Middle School in particular, and looking at our existing hiring tools and processes to make sure that they are aligned with the qualified candidate profile. And then we'll develop customized application materials and job announcements, and look out from a national perspective how we do that recruiting. Then throughout the hiring process, which is the second phase that they will support us in, a lot of that has to do with that virtual kind of support as we go through, assisting in not only candidate screening, but also the review of the responses, looking at artifacts, and capturing feedback from the hiring teams as well as the strengths and challenges in this process. And the last piece that they offer in this support for, for our return on investment is really that whole piece around onboarding that candidate into that new role and supporting them, and also helping with the, with that transition into the school itself. So looking at what are the quick wins, what are the successes already, so that this individual who comes in really understands and has real good clarity around Washington Middle School and the strengths of Washington, and then also looking at what are the training and coaching opportunities that need to also be in place to support that new principal so that they experience success. This is a very different process and protocols than we've ever experienced, and I would offer affords the district the ability to set ourselves up for the future as well as we think about onboarding other new principals within this process. And I think the competency-based expectations really focus in on finding leaders who know how to drive results, who know how to bring people into conversations and have those tough conversations, really around a results-driven opportunity, being able to see what's wrong. I mean, I think sometimes having that capacity and that ability to ask the right questions with the analytical thinking, and then also really looking at their, their ability to, to help shape culture and climate. The research is very, very clear that having the right principal lead a school, the teacher is the most important in the classroom, and then the principal is the other, the other key component that the research would tell you. And most importantly, no school, according to the research that I've read, has ever turned around without a very strong relational leader who can help bring people into the success of the students and the staff, and bring that organization and the community forward in that conversation. So that's what they would offer and support us in that journey around professional development and capacity building for now and into the future as well.
Any questions? Andrew?
I just want to point out, I appreciate it being, you know, being a nonprofit institute that we're going to. There's certainly, there's certainly other firms that I, I think would be commercially available firms that would be probably much, much more expensive than this. If we're looking at a recruitment fee, you know, in the many public, many private sector recruiter fees, you're looking thirty, forty, fifty percent of a, of a salary. So this, I think we're really getting a lot of, a lot of bang for the buck here, and some people who really are, are experts in this type of a leader search.
Roger?
I'm very happy that we're doing this, but is there a reason that it hasn't been done before?
You know, I think that's a very good question. One of the things that we're starting to learn, and this comes forward in the last several years in our conversations and support of the state, these opportunities that we've been able to understand and learn about are relatively new. I mean, part of the urban work that I've done since last spring has really brought this to light in terms of the work. I would say that John, and the work that you've been doing with the centers piece has really helped bring this to light as well. I think that the piece that I would offer is that, that we have the opportunity now in capacity, and the state, this is the first time the state has ever brought this kind of organization in to help them as well. So I'm looking forward, I think, I think we're in a real good place right now to be able to move this forward.
May I pick you back on that? We have been doing this for the last, I believe, at least three superintendents. So it's not new at that level, but it's basically a different world. When I got hired into the district thirty-some years ago, it was a national educational publication that, one of a handful that school districts would advertise in, and that's where people would go to find where positions were and how people would recruit. Of course, you have to remember that was before the internet as we know it, know it now. And we're, in this area, we're a little bit behind a lot of businesses. For a while now, they've been hiring headhunters and going that route to find a match between the personnel and, and the position. And now it's, it's migrated down to, to the school districts and the principal level, and I, I think that's a good thing.
It, it really has a much more urban focus, and I think that's the piece when I talk about what we've learned. I think one of the pieces is we've been hiring in a very traditional, almost suburban kind of thinking, where the focus has really been on instructional leadership, yep, driving for results, but also I think the piece that sometimes is missing is that real ability to analyze and analytically think about, how does this school fit in the broader community? How do we make sure that all voices are heard? How do we make sure that people from, from our, that we serve and our, each child that we serve from, from diverse backgrounds is, is brought into the conversation as well as their families, and bringing that community in as well? So I think it's a broader, broader approach, and I think that's the kind of learning that even the state is in process of doing as well collectively, so.
Anybody else? All right, we do have this open for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board on this particular agenda item? Seeing none, then we move to a vote. Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Wegner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the minutes of the regular board meeting dated January 15th, special board meetings dated January 22nd, at 4:15, January 22nd at 5:00 PM, January 29th, February 5th, and special board meetings close session dated January 15th, January 22nd, and February 5th be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Wegner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the transfer of Dennis Christensen, principal, 12 months at Washington Middle School at a salary of $109,461, to middle school associate principal, 11 months at Lombardi Middle School at a salary of $96,688, effective July 1st, 2018, as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Wegner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the transfer of Amy Fish, Spanish bilingual secretary at Fort Howard Elementary School, to volunteer and community partner coordinator of 11 months at the district office, effective, where's the date, for the 21, 2017, 2018, as presented be approved.
Second?
Sorry.
Sandy?
Wegner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the wage increase in the hourly rate for facility summer employees from $8 to $10.50 per hour to $10 to $11.50 per hour, effective for summer 2018 employment, as presented be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Wegner?
Aye.
Becker? Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Reposed?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, and we have two minutes, so we'll take our two minutes and start the regular work session. All right, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. We have six board members present, one is excused. Also, we're joined at the table by Clara Wellhouse from Southwest, and is Julia coming?
She's on her way.
Okay, and we will also be joined by Julia Bolson, also from Southwest, in a few minutes. I'm going to read information about the public, our public engagement opportunities. The board will provide our community with two different opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting law prohibits, prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board will also permit public participation during agenda items, as noted on our agenda, that the Board of Education will be voting on. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, boards, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members, are prohibited. At this time, I know we have one person who would like to speak before the board, and I'll ask Robin Davis to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Robin Davis, and I am president and CEO of Brown County United Way, address 112 North Adams Street, Suite 201, Green Bay. members of the community that have made a tremendous impact, not only on our organization, but on the community at large. So I'm going to read what everyone heard last Thursday. Dr. Langenfeld was not present, so now we all get to hear what our guests heard on Thursday. The W. Hurley McDonald Award honors individuals who have made significant contributions to the community and United Way. This year's recipient is Dr. Michelle Langenfeld. Dr. Langenfeld has served as superintendent of schools and learning for the Green Bay area Public School District since July of two thousand eleven. The district's mission, developed under her leadership, is to educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. To that end, Michelle has worked collaboratively with staff, families, and the community to build and expand partnerships, innovative programs, and opportunities that lead to increased student learning and achievement. Michelle serves on the Brown County United Way Board of Directors, as well as the Boards of Directors of the Einstein Project, Achieve Brown County, Greater Green Bay Chamber, and Partners in Education. The Chamber named Michelle the two thousand sixteen Athena Award winner for demonstrating excellence in the profession while supporting the advancement of women and committing time and resources for the benefit of our community. We are proud to recognize Dr. Langenfeld with our W. Hurley McDonald Award. She was, you were out of state last week, so Kim Shanick accepted the, the award on your behalf, and I just want to say, since I stepped into the role at Brown County United Way now, almost ten months ago, Michelle, you were definitely an encouragement and a supporter in my early tenure, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you in the future. So thank you very much.
Did you want to get a picture? Yeah, Lori, why don't you come up?
Can I say something?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
First of all, this is very humbling and unexpected, but more importantly, it takes the collective work. As I look out, and I'm looking forward to the presentation here shortly, we've built a lot since two thousand eleven in our community, and it is noteworthy that as we look to create a very inclusive environment to serve each and every student that we serve, I, I can't help but think about the journey that we've been on collectively. We started out, I, I just said, you know, the Equity Department that's about to give the presentation tonight really didn't exist, and now we're moving forward collectively. The work at United Way focused around children and families has always been there and a critical part of our community, but now we have the opportunity to even leverage that greater, to be able to provide resources and supports for families and to really understand the data in our community, which is something through the Community Information System, but also the Community Partnership for Children and all of those home visits. And I remember humbly, I don't know where Stephen Miller is and Terry Williams, but they went with me, and the first time we went and presented to United Way, and we talked about our children that we're serving, and we talked about the fact that many come to our schools who don't have any letter recognition and any number recognition, and their first language is English, but sadly, for the, for the most challenging part of this is sadly many can't even hold a pencil because they've never been able to, to develop those small motor skills. So it's been a collaborative effort, and I look out and I see many, many, many who have joined in the journey in terms of the heavy lifting. So I feel very honored and very privileged to be part of this community. I feel very honored and privileged to serve side by side with, with folks who sit around me and up here at the board table and also out in our community. The lifting is heavy, the rewards are extraordinary, and I am most grateful and very humbled by this, so thank you.
Very fancy.
This is how I usually wear this too. You guys are matching today too.
They talk.
All right, great, thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the open forum? Seeing none, we will move on to our teaching and learning work session agenda, and that will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We will begin with our discussion items, and our first one is the Equity Department overview. Please come to the table and let our viewing public know who you are.
Thank you for this opportunity tonight. It was probably two months ago when the team came and presented to the Board Climate and Engagement Work Group. And we had asked at that time, do you feel like this is information that the whole board would like to hear? And yes, resoundingly, which is why we're here. Unfortunately, the snow day interfered with the last one, so we thank you for allowing the time tonight. I'm really proud of the work that this team has done. I hope you will find it too for this presentation. We have a lot of work to do yet, but this is the right team to do it. So to my left is Toni Babe. She is the Associate Director of People's Services and oversees Equity Department as part of her role, but also works with the Behavior Team. And to her left is Riva Shaw. Riva is the District Equity Coordinator. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to them to go through the slideshow.
Thank you.
So I've already been introduced, and I think, Dr. Langenfeld, what you said originally, you know, as you talked about receiving the award and where we've come as a district in terms of equity, has certainly started to lay a foundation for where we are going in terms of being equitable in the work that we do every day with all of our staff and with, with the content. So I wanted to thank you first of all, because when, before you came, we had equity training, and we talked a lot about the iceberg. And I think for a long time, we talked about all those things that were on top of the iceberg. And now we've been able to, with you inviting Gary Howard in and doing some culturally relevant work, as well as allowing us to attend the Leadership and Equity Academy and the culturally responsive systems training this year that our Equity Team and some other folks within the district have participated in, we are beginning to lay a better foundation around how we can support our schools around equity for all of our students to make sure that all of our students succeed. It's important in terms of, like you said, the work that we're doing, you talked about hiring and looking at the broader community. So as we look at the changes that the broader community is bringing to us, we also need to be able to support our staff and our students and being able to support our families and giving them voice in the work that we do every day. So in order to do that, we have the practices that we're going to be talking about here today with, with you. We have been working with the board, we have been working with the Teaching and Learning Departments, as well as curriculum leads in terms of providing specific things that they can use to implement practices in our day-to-day work so that we can continue and make this a place where all students are welcome, all families are welcome, and all staff have the ability to support that work.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you advance?
It should, is this now working? Quick to present. Can you check and see if it's on? Is it clear on?
If you want to go ahead and advance those, sorry, thank you.
So the model that you see is the Department of Public Instruction model for work here, and as you can see in that model, equity is the center of that work. So again, I talked about the foundational work that what we do, and I love that the model changed this year from what was previously the example and, and the model that was set forth by the department. Equity now at the middle of the work looks at, are we engaged in highly effective instruction and how we are in, in practices in the work that we do? So what we're trying to do from an equity standpoint and as an Equity Department, along with our family engagement coordinators, along with our Title VI folks, is to make sure that all of the work that happens in our schools is centered around, are we performing practices equitably throughout? Are we supporting them with practices that actually reach and engage all of our students in the classroom, as well as reaching out to our families to engage them into some of the practices, coming in and having voices, having discussions, some of those courageous conversations that were mentioned, so that we can really address what our public and our community sees as a need in order for students to be successful, because once they leave our schools, they become members of our broader community that you talked about earlier.
So with the work that the Equity Department does, we always start out by just giving a brief example of what's the difference between equity and equality. We feel in order for us to, as Ms. Toni mentioned, to take the work deeper that Gary Howard kind of got us started with, he kind of created that foundation, to go a little deeper now. We try to make sure that everybody has a nice understanding of the difference between equity and equality, so that we understand truly what is the work of the Equity Department. So in order in, to be in line with our mission of educating all students to be college, career, and community ready, we use this nice visual to kind of explain the difference. If we were to equally treat all of our students the same and provide them all with the same bike, it obviously would not address the needs that they have. But if we look on the bottom under equity, if we look to the needs of each individual person and adjust the services to them based on their needs, then that's how we create equity. And that ultimately is our goal, is to look at our systems and our procedures and make sure that we are creating equitable practices in all those different areas. So in order to give you a little bit better understanding or a little deeper understanding of what our Equity Department does, we thought we'd start out by just explaining the different components within the Equity Department. As we have mentioned, it has grown quite a bit from one person to quite a few different programs within equity. And so we wanted to run through each of them for you tonight and kind of highlight some of the practices that we've been working on this past year. So we're going to start out with family engagement. We also have the Avid Program underneath equity and the Title VI Indian Education Program, as well as the Professional Development that we do throughout the district. I'd also like to note, we also have the Education Equity Committee, or sometimes known as our EEC, that helps guide and advise the work that we do.
We are also working with our Parent Advisory Committee for Title VI, our Indian Education, to also provide input to us on what we can do to better enhance the opportunities for our native students in the district.
So we're going to start out by introducing our family engagement team. So we have these, if you guys don't mind taking a stand for a second and just waving hi. We have our four family engagement coordinators, as this team has grown. We have Luis Franko Tuskana, who works with our bilingual, Spanish-speaking families. We have Stanley Smith, our newest member to our team, who works with the emphasis of special education, so we partner with Special Education Department. With family engagement, we have Yussa, who works with our Somali families and engagement with that population, and Ms. Mayur Parker Hill, who works with us on engaging our African American families. Thank you, guys. So we'd like to highlight a little bit of the work that this team has been doing over this past year, and this first one really highlights our engagement opportunities around our African American families and students. This year, we created what we call their I-Three Experience, standing for Inspire, Influence, and Ignite, because we want our kids to know that we're here to inspire them, influence the choices, to have a positive future, and just kind of ignite that passion for higher education. And so one of the highlights that we did this year was creating an opportunity to attend two different events, the College Classic and the Milwaukee College Fair, where we were really able to have them experience college fair around HBCUs and what that stands for as far as a cultural perspective, and maybe just showing them other opportunities that they don't typically see. So in order to, in going to these events, the Chicago Classic, we were able to have forty-two students registered to attend that, and I think the really neat highlight about this one is we had eleven community leaders, of our diverse community leaders, that attended as chaperones. So what an amazing opportunity for our students to see themselves reflected in the leaders of our community that sometimes they may not always see. And then the Milwaukee College Fair was another opportunity that we were able to partner. We had eighteen students attend and had seven community chaperones to attend with them, and actually represented eight of our secondary schools. And so we had kind of a pick across the district of students that were able to attend. And then we were able to build in some partnerships to continue some mentoring throughout the year with our kids, where we've had them come in as guest speakers and talk with them, mentor them, advise them, give them suggestions about higher education or career opportunities. So it's been multiple touches throughout the year. So it was not set up to be just a one-time event, but to truly keep engaging our students throughout the year about their opportunities and to, to encourage them.
Now, not listed on that slide, but coming up here the week of spring break, and HBCU being historically black colleges and universities, my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, will be putting on a college fair as well as other opportunities in the city. We are going to be painting the city red, and, and part of that experience, I hope, is that we will be able to provide an opportunity for some of the staff here, as well as possibly some of the students, to experience again a continued piece of honor, being a part of something that represents them and creates opportunities for them to look at how they can increase their career opportunities and connect to mentors throughout the community.
Two more events that have been built in to engage engagement with our students and our families is the Special Education Workshop. We have been able to do that for two years now. This most recent year, we had over fifty that attended, as well as ten community agencies. So you see, we also try to do a dual engagement process where we're engaging families into our district and kind of bridging that, as well as connecting them to resources within the community. So to have ten community agencies that also came in and supported that day, I thought was pretty huge. We've been able to grow that each year. So after doing it two times, our families have really loved that individual attention, and we've done it in partnership with the Special Education Department so that they're there and are able to walk through IEPs or answer questions and just really get that personalized one-on-one service. So that's been a great opportunity for our families. The other one is our Celebrating Students' Success Event. If some of you had a chance to see that last year, last year was our first time, it was kind of a pilot, pilot trial run, and I feel like it was just such an amazing opportunity. I heard so many comments, and I think, Dr. Langenfeld, from you as well, you know, just seeing our families walk in, just kind of like this, just, you know, shoulders held high, their heads held high, just so proud of their students and their successes. We created this event because we know sometimes our students are not always the perfect attendance ones, the straight A students are the ones that typically are getting awarded or recognized. And we thought, what can we do to engage those other families who sometimes just have other hurdles in their lives, where they're actually working a lot harder in order to just stay engaged and to be successful to the best of their abilities? So we thought, let's create an opportunity where we can really recognize and highlight those strengths that they're bringing to the table. And so we recognize them for things like resilience, teamwork, different things like that, that are just a little bit outside of the ordinary. So last year, we were able to have one hundred and sixty-four students and their families attend, and we had thirty-seven of our thirty-nine schools participate. So pretty big participation from throughout the district. So we are in the process now of planning our one for this upcoming year as well, so we'll be sure to send those invites out to you guys.
Can I just comment on the young man in the picture with me?
Yes.
This is a young man who came into our district from another country, who had very little acquisition of the English language, but was able to share that he wanted to go into the medical profession. So the, through the support that he received at Preble, through a number of extraordinary teachers and administrators and mentors, and I would guess that maybe Luis might know who he is as well, really provided him with those access and opportunities. And the last time I saw him, he was talking with Dr. Toni Evers about his pathway. He was in the Certified Nursing Assistant Program and heading off, and who knows, he may well be a candidate that we'll see at the medical college someday. He's well on his way, but it's extraordinary how engaging students and making sure they have the resources and supports and great teachers and staff has really changed lives. And that's what you see here, and those are the stories behind the students we serve there.
Yes, thank you for sharing. The last thing I'd like to highlight about that event is it was also an amazing opportunity for us. We had students within our district actually come and perform, and so we had some cultural performances of our students. And one of our students was in special education, and he was just so excited and thrilled to have an opportunity to be a leader and to be able to showcase the skills that he had. And so that's another neat highlight of that event, is showcasing the cultures that are represented within our district. The next one is around our school support that we provide. Open house-
So through the support that he received at Preble, through a number of extraordinary teachers and administrators and mentors, and I would guess that maybe Luis might know who he is as well, really provided him with those access and opportunities. And the last time I saw him, he was talking with Dr. Toni Evers about his pathway. He was in the Certified Nursing Assistant Program and heading off. And who knows, he may well be a candidate that we'll see at the medical college someday. He's well on his way. But it's extraordinary how engaging students and making sure they have the resources and supports and great teachers and staff has really changed lives. And that's what you see here, and those are the stories behind the students we serve there.
Yes, thank you for sharing. The last thing I'd like to highlight about that event is it was also an amazing opportunity for us. We had students within our district actually come and perform. And so we had some cultural performances of our students. And one of our students was in special education, and he was just so excited and thrilled to have an opportunity to be a leader and to be able to showcase the skills that he had. And so that's another neat highlight of that event is showcasing the cultures that are represented within our district. The next one is around our school support that we provide, open houses and registration nights. Our team, as I mentioned earlier, we try to really just collaborate with other departments within the district because we don't want it to be looked at as the Equity Department are the only ones who do the equity work, but is really infusing and integrating the equity lens throughout all of the departments. And so the open houses and registrations, we were able to come out and support our schools and support the technology and registration area. We were able to cover six different schools where we came in and helped families sign up for registration, make sure they knew what they were doing, answer questions, make sure they were understanding the processes, as well as we are able to get them signed up for Infinite Campus, which we think is a huge empowering opportunity for our families to understand just the access to all the information they can have to support their students. So we're able to do that with those nights as well. We also did a trans, we created a transition event. We have, in looking at our data, have realized we do have some harder transitions between our elementary to sixth grade, as well as our eighth grade to ninth grade. And so we thought, what can we do outside of the box to help make sure these families are still engaged? And so we started working with Washington Mo Schools, our first school. They've now done it two years, where we really reach out to all of the families that are coming in to sixth grade. And then another one for those going into ninth grade, where we really highlight, who do you contact? How is the structure different? Who is it that, you know, you need to know to address the needs that you have? And really just be able to have that one-on-one conversation with our families, two of them in the schools. And it was actually developed and led by other parents in our district. As I mentioned, our EEC Committee is actually made up of parents in our district. And so they gave us a lot of advice and suggestions around what they wish they would have known or what they thought were some gaps in communicating with families. So we're able to fill that in with these transition events. And we're also able to start it at Franklin this year as well. And they had over 300 in attendance for that event. So it was another great opportunity to engage our families. We've also worked on some heritage months, so preparing resources to help celebrate our cultural heritage months throughout the year. And then we also try to go out and participate in our family nights and try to help us as a district move from just participation, our families just showing up, to actual engagement. And what's that difference? And what does it look like? And how do we create these opportunities to be more engaging for our families? So we have opportunities to go out to our school family nights, we attend our Title VI family nights, as well as our Avid family nights.
This is an area, we really hope to engage our family engagement coordinators more, using them to be that catalyst to help our families learn how to navigate our system, be able to know that they have supports and places that they can go where if they need to ask questions, and then connect them to the appropriate resources within the school district. We hope to use them, again, in the future more, as well as during those opportunities we have at family nights and even some opportunities throughout the school day.
And the last category is kind of our community collaboration. We do many different things within our community because we see our family engagement coordinators as kind of that bridge between our families and the community and bridging them into us in the district. So we try to get out into the community and participate with our families as much as possible. So I've highlighted a few, our Back to School Store event. We have over 1,500 families that come through the Back to School Store, and we have some of our administration and leadership that comes that day and volunteers, as well as our team is there with a table to provide information, answer questions on our district. It's a full-day event, so great opportunity. We've also partnered with a group to create a Cultural Connections event that tries to help network our diverse leaders in the community in education and help them connect to each other and provide support services to each other. Martin Luther King Junior Day, we've been able to participate as well. Dr. Langenfeld has been able to give awards, and our schools participate in writing and posters. And we also serve on that planning committee. African Heritage, we participate in the Emerging Leaders Conference. We actually bring students down to the Kimberly area to participate in a leadership conference, as well as St. Norbert College is another way that we have had students be able to go out and partner with our higher education institutions. And they're really focused on like our Hispanic, Native American, and our African-American students. So really trying to do another way to address that achievement gap and really just get them connected to other resources in the community. A few other ones, we also serve on some community committees as well and partner with other community members like Casa Alba. We tend Hispanic inter-agency group, neighborhood associations we've been partnering with of how do we get them involved as well. Achieve Brown County, and as I previously mentioned, our EEC Committee. Next, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Avid. Ms. Paulette here, Ms. Ma. I've not been able to make it. We have a tutor coordinator, in addition to myself, that also helps oversee Avid. She assists in kind of the day-to-day tasks, as well as our hiring and training of our tutors out in the schools. So we'll talk about a few of the highlights within Avid. I wanted to start with this slide because the four, these are the four focus areas of Avid. It's Instruction, Systems, Leadership, and Culture. And as you see by looking at that, it's very much in line with our mission and vision as a district and our kind of pillar focus areas. Within Instruction, we really focus on WICER strategies, which is Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, Reading. We develop student leadership skills. We teach our kids how to goal set and monitor those goals. Really pushes for rigor for all. So as you'll see in some data coming up, we really push them to do AP classes or just higher-level classes for them. Our Leadership, we teach them how to strategically plan for their future. We do a scaffolding model so that if they've joined Avid in seventh grade, we scaffold them all the way that by the time they're seniors, they have all their applications for FAFSA, scholarship, and actual applications to the college already completed, done, letters of reference. Everything is put in order by the time they graduate with Avid. And then Culture as well, getting our kids to understand that they can see themselves in higher education and succeed as well. So I wanted to kind of highlight what's going on in the district for Avid. Right now, we have currently 26 Avid sections, so different elective classes that we have. We currently are in East, West Preble, Washington, Edison, and Lombardi, so our secondary schools. We have 17 Avid elective teachers. And then I also did a breakdown by race and ethnicity for you as well, with 47% Hispanic, Latino, seven black, 7% black, 12% Asian, two Native American, and 28% white. Our average class size is around 21. And then another piece of Avid is there's the Classroom Instruction, which is around those WICER strategies I earlier mentioned. And then we also, two days a week, do tutoring with our kids that helps them learn a system and to problem-solve on their own. So we're not coming in and just walking through with their homework, but we're actually teaching them levels of inquiry and problem-solving strategies as part of their tutorology twice a week. And so we also hire 15 to 20 tutors every year to help support our students with that. Some more of the highlights of the success, 80% of our Avid middle school students have completed an honors course. So when I say we really push them for rigorous coursework, here's a perfect example because they were able to do a credit-bearing course with a grade of C or higher at 80%. And with our Avid seniors, some great highlights, we had 100% of them were able to complete a four-year college entrance requirement, 100% took the SAT or ACT, 90.5% took at least one course of rigor, 100% of them graduated on time. So when you talk attendance and engagement, 100%. We also had 96% that actually applied to a four-year college and 72% that were accepted to a four-year college. So like I said, if they're following that scaffolding, we're having some great turnouts with that Avid program. This is just kind of another little side fact that we like to a little bit brag about. As I mentioned, part of that is helping them do all the components of being able to reach higher education. One of those is, we actually help them apply for scholarships and show them how to search those out, how to apply and assist them with that. So we wanted to highlight for East High School, their Avid seniors have been offered over a million dollars in scholarships. So that's life-changing for our kids who are trying to be able to reach that higher education. So we just thought we'd throw that out there as well. And then our next program is our Title VI Indian Education Program. So we have a couple of our team members here. Two of you can stand. We have Ms. Cheyenne, who is serving over at Nicolay and Sullivan, and Song, who is serving over at Lombardi and King Elementary.
We have a question.
I just want to ask a question about the Avid.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The...
Now, I know with Avid, there's kids that are in and out. Sometimes we have kids that go seven to 12, and others might do it for middle school, and then they don't have room in their schedule, they choose not to. So are we keeping, I mean, are these Avid seniors, I assume it's not everybody that's ever been in Avid, is it just the Avid kids that are in Avid their senior year?
That was the 2017 Avid seniors.
Okay. Are we collecting data on all of our Avid kids?
We do. Every year, we do collect data on our Avid students. So we track the number of students, how many are each section, how many of them attend each year. We work with the schools every summer. We go to the summer, Avid Summer Institute, which is our training over the summer that we take our staff to. And during that training, we actually review their data with them. So we have them look at how many kids started in Avid, how many were retained, if they weren't retained, why. So we have them dig into that data every summer, that's our focus. And then they build that into, every year they do a site plan for their Avid within their school. And so we ask them to look at that data and incorporate it into their site team, site team plan. So they build that in the beginning, and then we monitor it throughout the year. And then by the end of the year, we actually relook at all of their data and then submit it to Avid.
Do we, do we have the ability to, like, if a student is in Avid seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, and then they aren't in Avid after that, do we take that student and look at these metrics in terms of, did they apply to college, did they take ACT, those kinds of things? Do we have that in place? Is that something that we, because I would be interested in knowing as a board member, but also I would think that that would be important data that you could use for students and parents to say, you know, the students that stick with this have a much higher chance of success than if you drop, you know, after eighth grade or after ninth grade. And to be able to show that, because that might help encourage some of, you know, it might help some parents sort of kind of nudge their students to continue with Avid. But I don't know how, I would think that would be terribly hard to put into the system. Yeah.
I just want to piggyback on that. I know that the Avid data would tell us too, though, that, you know, I'd be curious to know how these students progress without the support of Avid if they've been in Avid because the research would tell you, the Avid research would tell you that if you have a student who will start to engage in rigorous coursework, then they can just keep moving on their own. So it would be real interesting to see if there's any difference in that data set. You know, I think both the ones who've been through the whole time, but does it matter or not? And it might, I don't know. It'll be interesting. But their research would tell you it would keep going even if they weren't in Avid.
We've also been exploring Avid school-wide opportunities and had conversation with Riva and others, and Mike Fries and Tom Ho, just regarding how we can use Avid, not just for the students that are part of the Avid elective, but how we can use it as a support for general school improvement and cultural improvement related to an academic focus. So that's something that I look forward to continued partnership with Riva's strong leadership there.
Any other question? Okay. All right, so our Title VI Indian Education Program. So this is a federally grant-funded program. We wanted to highlight for you the kind of the focus areas that we work on. We have three grant objectives that are set for our program. The first one is to increase cultural identity and awareness. So we really work with our kids on creating that strong identity and awareness of who they are, where they're from, and help them take that and connect that to how they relate within our schools. We also focus on increasing parent participation. So our team members go out and they support, like, for parent-teacher conferences, they can support if there are ever any behavior, IEPs, any of those type of things, our team members will go in and sit in and advocate and support for our families, make sure that they're understanding the processes and what they're involved in, and really just kind of get them from participation to engagement. And during those family nights, they bring in different speakers and opportunities to explore different components of culture there as well. And the third one is increasing academic achievement. So this year, with the advisement of our Parents Advisory Committee, we have been focusing more on the literacy rates of our students. King Elementary in particular has been very focused and has strategically planned out certain students that could use that additional support. And Song has been working with those students. And then we are monitoring the increase of their academic achievement now that they've had this additional support, where she can focus on building those relationships, as well as helping them support their reading. So that's part of our increasing academic achievement. We also monitor that engagement around attendance and work with our behavior teams with MLSS and our tiers, and really trying to support our students within that universal level or if for some reason they are moved within the tiers, that our team can step in and also help support those students as well. So we've included a few pictures here about some of the different opportunities that our students have had in the district. There's kind of a wide range there of support that our team provides. They've had different service projects. They've brought people from the community. You'll see up on the top, we have some of our Native American elders from the community that had an opportunity to come in and speak with our students. Our students were able to make some cards and bake some, I believe it was brownies, that they were able to give to our veterans for the community for Veterans Day. And so we've tried to do some service things. We've done some gardens, community gardens at our schools, an opportunity for our families to come to the schools and be a part of that gardening experience, and also teaching the cultural component, like with the Three Sisters for Onida, the significance of that within that culture. So lots of different opportunities that we provide culture throughout the year. Next, we have the Professional Development aspect of the Equity Team. This first wheel is our Wisconsin's Model to Inform Culture Responsive Practices. This is built into the MLSS framework. As you see, Culture Responsive Practices is kind of the center to that. And when we said earlier that our phase now of Professional Development is really going deeper with the Gary Howard work, this is the wheel that we're using as the framework in order to go deeper with that. You'll see on the wheel, it's really starting out. The first one is becoming self-aware. And so we want to try to help create that will or the desire for people to lead within Equity work. Then we try to increase their knowledge, cultural knowledge, so that they can kind of fill that knowledge base around different cultures. And then the skill portion, which is actually applying the knowledge, and what does that look like in application within their classroom or throughout our district? So to give you an example of kind of what that would look like, sorry, my finger must push real hard. The first one is becoming self-aware. As I mentioned, you'll see on the side, what I did was list out different topics that we have gone out into the schools and trained our staff on. So as we mentioned earlier, the Equity versus Equality, we like to explore culture, as Toni mentioned earlier, to move from what's the surface level and what's a deeper level culture, and how do we understand those different aspects of the families that we work with? We feel it's really important to explore unconscious bias and how that affects how we teach and how we differentiate, as well as providing a privilege activity so that we can again look at what is the lens that we're looking through and make sure that we are able to step out of just our lens, but also to see things, how our families and our students see things. So that would be the work that we would come out and do in the schools. So just recently, we were able to do Keller, Howe, and Nicolay, three elementary schools in one week to do this preliminary work. And we'll be going back in Howe at the end of this month to continue doing this work.
Before she goes into resources, one of our hopes is by attending the Culture Responsive Systems Training, and we have a team of folks who go, is that we hope to be able to look at all 42 schools in the district and set up a systemic process by which we can take each school and teams from each of those schools through this will so that we get them to the point of implementation.
Okay, so I've studied about unconscious bias too, and there's various instruments that you can take and so forth. What I'm wondering is, what, you have the training, you discover that the unconscious bias is there by basically everybody. What happens next? I mean, do we just get to the point of awareness and noticing it, and then we stop doing it? Because it seems it's probably a little harder than that to fix.
Definitely harder than that. And when you look at the will, you get them into that, the field piece, which is helping them obtain the knowledge. But then you want to move them into the skill and do some of the things that we've already put into place. Working with our Curriculum Department and saying, this is how you can infuse it into your day-to-day work, then becomes a way that we can recognize those things that implicitly affect our biases, but help us also be able to reflect enough to go be aware that we have them and not have them affect the work as it is being implemented in the schools, not just in the classrooms, but in everything that our kids do, whether it be in athletics, whether it be about behavior. How we look at, how we interact with our students and with our families is the awareness part, but teaching us how to do it based on the experiences and recognize and honor the experiences of the folks that we come in contact with on a daily basis gets them into that skill piece.
And I would just add on to that, another example of moving them from that field. So once they've done the unconscious bias work, kind of what you're asking is the what next, is what does that look like within the school? So for example, we just recently did a training with Elementary English Language Arts Department. And we did a cultural training, working through some of this with them so that they could go into our bookrooms and do an... through some of this with them, so that they could go into our bookrooms and do an audit on our books, and do really look for those implicit biases within the books and the resources that we have. So we're able to walk them through this work. And now what does that look like in practice? How do we look at our books and review for implicit bias, or different things within that category, so that we can get those resources out and replace them with better resources? The other one is if you look under skill, the final piece would be using practices in curriculum that respects students' cultures. So an example of that is we've, we've had this two, two-year-long partnership with the Teaching and Learning Department, really working closely with Angie LaCombe, where we've been able to work with her staff, her content leads, and they have walked through a lot of this work. And they are to the point where they revised their curriculum essential documents, did some additional training with other Native American leaders in our community to walk through all of this, and now are actually supplementing resources. And we have even created cultural bins that are going to be going out into each of our schools that supplement our curriculum, and so that our teachers are teaching in a way that they're seeing through these cultural lenses. So putting it into practice once they've walked through the entire wheel.
So how's, what is, what's being changed? So you're bringing some, you're bringing in some materials representative of a variety of cultures, so that's good, but what else?
It's changing the mindset, truly understanding what is equity, and how do we differentiate how we do things to meet the needs of our different kids. And it's really looking at what does that look like in practice within our district? So within our teaching strategies, are we differentiating our teaching models to know that some of our students are more kinesthetic learners, or different things like that, based on their culture? It's really putting all of that in application once they understand the cultures. How do we differentiate our teaching and instruction styles to, to help reduce that achievement gap of our students? And so I know we're running short on time. The, the next slide was really some, just, I wanted to highlight some resources, training and resources. These are all links to the network, which is the Network for Disproportionality and Technical Assistance. We get a lot of our resources from them. So I've put that on there. I don't think I can do it from here, but you'll be able to go on there and see some of the trainings. We just like to highlight, they're all free trainings and fits in line with the work that we are doing around the culture responsive wheel. So it's the partner agency we work with, as well as the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. All of the trainings that we are doing around equity are in line with DPI and what they are having, as well as our family engagement and the strategies we are using and framework we are using fits in line with that as well. We also like to really point out the Title VI Indian Education page. That's actually on our district website. And we always like to highlight that for people, because I think it's kind of like a hidden gem that we have on our district website, that not many people are aware is there. We actually have built-in media resources, teacher resources, language resources. It's already there and linked, as well as if you want further information on tribes, we have all of our tribes linked there as well. The team has worked really hard developing those resources for around best practices and truly getting to the Native American communities that we serve. So I wanted to highlight those for you. And then we just wanted to end with, we are all a part of the Equity Team. That's how we end all of our presentations. Like I said earlier, we just try to help infuse the Equity lens into the other departments, so that the other departments can continue to do the work that they are great at with that Equity lens. So as a thank you, we actually brought along some thanks-a-lot cookies, because I like to be a little cheesy sometimes. So this is for you guys, just truly as a thank you for the support, because as we mentioned, we, we are aware and very conscious of how much you have allowed our Equity Team to grow. And it really has been just humbling to see this team grow in these past two, just in the three years I've been here, how we've gone from like one or two people up to the team that we have now. So we truly do appreciate your support in the Equity work that we have. So pass those around for you guys. And that's it for me. Any other?
Tony, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Chris.
Thanks, ma'am. It's certainly been lucky to see everything that's going on. I had no idea that much was being done. Quite frankly, if you're only doing half of what you said you were doing, it'd be outstanding and your well-being on that. Two particular things that I'm particularly happy about. One is, I've heard so many different explanations of equal and equity, and, but I've never seen anything like the bicycles. And that one just hit it so well in explaining it. I really, really enjoyed that, that graphic. And the other one I'm particularly pleased to see is what's being done with Native American and Indian education. My bias, talking about biases, historically in our district, I've always felt that was very much of a step-step child and never got the attention it needed. So I'm happy to hear that that's included in, in the work you folks do. Thank you.
Did you have any? Okay.
I just want to thank you and for your leadership, Riva, and to the whole team. I think that what may not have come out in your, in your presentation are the conversations, the critical conversations you've been having with individuals. Really, when you talked about changing, you know, and educating the mind, I think it's changing minds and changing hearts sometimes that really starts to, when people start to realize, you know, to Mr. Becker's comment about the bias, yep, we all have those because that's how we make sense of the world. But it's what we do in response to those and how we embrace each other in the journey. We have a lot of work to do. I'm grateful to have you be part of our work together. And I want to thank all of you and for all of the teachers out there who have worked in partnership and leadership in our schools as well. It's a collective effort, and we're working slowly, but it's moving. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next item, community engagement sessions.
Losing a large crowd.
We are.
So this is just a chance for board members to take a look at the format for the two engagement sessions around school safety and to make sure that, and also primarily, I think to also look at the questions that are planned to be asked, and are there any other questions that people would like added to that list?
Andrew.
So I'm, I, I feel pretty good about the, the session, the, the questions on, on there. And I think there's certainly, I think there certainly is merit to a roundtable format as a part of, and an important part of how we get our information. It's an opportunity for people who might not be as interested in speaking at an open mic to come and provide input in another way. Excuse me. That said, it's also important to me that we have a chance to address this important topic in a traditional format as well, which is why I've requested it also be an agenda item at some point in the regular board meeting next week. And I'm just wondering how, how that would, how that would work? And then we're, then we're doing both. Then we have the, right?
What would be the agenda item?
Well.
What would be the topic?
I guess, I guess the, I guess the topic, I guess the topic would be, I guess the topic would be school safety and security.
But are?
The two sessions, the two engagement sessions that we're having, as I understand it, will be summarized again by the CISA seven people, and they will provide a report to us. Would it be beneficial to have the open session then?
Yeah, I think people are pretty, I think people are pretty interested in sharing their views about it now. And while I do think, I do think the roundtable is a good format, I think things can be, I think things can be taken the wrong way in the community. And I, I would hate to see people feel that we're limiting input because there's set questions when we can, we can keep a good system and add an opportunity for open, open discussion in the traditional format. There's, you know, I, I struggled with this at first, because I was really afraid that, because this has, this has happened before, that people, people see, see something and they see a press conference and they believe something that's not accurate. I have, I have probably had to have 30 or 40 conversations saying that something that is, you know, the recent idea from the police department is an idea, that we welcome ideas, but it's impossible for something to be a district proposal because it's never even been discussed by the district. I have, you know, I've also asked people to, I've asked people to reach out, and I'm finding that almost, almost 80/20, and I, I asked the question, are you currently in favor of this proposal, or are you currently not in favor of the proposal? Because details change, of the police department's proposal. Details change, so I wanted to make sure it said currently. I think people, I think people want to be heard, and I think a lot of people will feel heard in this format, but it's, it's essential for there to be another opportunity. And I think the 12th is the time, and maybe also closer to the 16th is the time. I just cannot be part of, part of explaining away misunderstandings and people saying, you limited our questions and things like that, because unfortunately, that's going to happen if we don't have multiple ways of, of people coming forward to us. There's no, there's no question in my mind about the sincerity of the format, or even that it's a good format. We get good information out of this format, we do. But we get good information out of a more free-form, open forum where people can speak their mind. We get good information out of that too, and I'm not okay with doing just one.
I have a question. I was going to the bathroom. What did you say originally you were suggesting?
Oh, that we put on the, on the, put an agenda item on next week about school safety and security, so that way we can have the traditional input, which I think is good, and we can have this also, which is good.
I think when it comes to this topic and possibly changing the culture of our school system, we should have every opportunity we can for the public to come forward and talk about it. Just my thoughts.
I'm still, I don't, you know, object to what's been said, but I'm still not quite clear on how you'd formulate it at the board meeting. I'm, I'm looking at the questions, and the last question is, what other concerns about school safety do you have that, you know, you feel may, you may be missing? So I'm, to me, that's pretty open-ended question for everyone who chooses to come to either of those two meetings. What, what format are you thinking of? And maybe you have had a chance to, to formulate it at the 12th a week from now, you know, when we have, have this session here.
So if it's on the agenda, then people can speak to the agenda topic and they can have, there can be board interaction with the, the speakers. I could see, I could see the board doing any one of a number of things on the 12th, since we can, usually, usually a motion is more specifically known in advance. But with the, with the topic noticed, I could see the board authorizing further study. I could see the board possibly having heard on the 10th and having heard on the, during the meeting on the 12th, that there might be an overwhelming consensus in one direction to do, to just stop something in its tracks with a motion. I, I don't know, because I haven't heard the input yet.
Can I just clarify, Andrew, if you are going to take action, you're going to have to make sure the board agenda indicates that action will be taken. That is one of the requirements of open meeting law. So there will have to be, it's not necessary that the motion be written out as we typically do, but you will have to indicate in the board agenda item that action will be taken.
Can the board choose, I mean, if we're, so the board has to take an action, or it's just to alert to the possibility of action?
Correct, correct.
So we worded as action will, but it means we have the option to.
Since we've never done it, I don't know exactly how we would word it, but I would, I'll look to make sure that it complies with the notice requirements of notifying the public that action could be taken.
Could be taken.
So what's the advantage of having that on the 12th, rather than after we've had our two scheduled engagement sessions, and then it's coming to the board, and there would be open forum?
Yeah, because I think people are really mad about it now, and I think people are really upset about a press conference that created an impression that wasn't true. I'm, I'm hearing a lot, a lot about it, and I just don't want to, you know, I think we should do, do it now, and I think we should do it again in April with, you know, with me or with whoever's here. I think it's, it's important enough to have them both twice. This issue isn't going to be solved between now and April, but at any, at any rate, I think, I, I think it goes, I think things go on the agenda at a board member's request, which I, I did. So I think it's more just, just me saying that I think both are good. I didn't want my agenda request, my agenda request to be interpreted as, I think this isn't good and we should do this instead. But if, if someone were to say, oh, I get it, you're doing a list of standardized questions, we can say, yep, and we have open forum two days later, if, if that's your thing too.
Is there any reason why, or anything we would lose by doing that on the 12th? Is there a reason why we wouldn't do it?
I, to that point, what I think you'd have to be careful of, I, I heard talk about maybe having an action of some sort. And if I'm sitting out in the public and I'm already planning on going to the one in April, wait a minute, they're already taking action on it. What input do they want from me on the, in April? So I, I think that would, you'd have to be careful of. I mean, I, I would, I, right now, I, in my mind, I would see it as, as more of a listening, asking, clarifying questions, you know. I mean, I don't see us doing anything to speak of until we have the two, two sessions, you know.
There's such a range, though. You could, you could, there could be a, a motion to communicate with legislators about certain types of weapons or, or something. There could be a, a motion to direct the administration to explore something that we'd like explored quicker. Or there might be nothing, but the option's off the table if it's not noticed properly.
Good question. What, what is the actual proposal? I mean, is there, is it laid out somehow?
No.
So, right.
There is no proposal.
Okay. And so, but we're calling something a proposal, right? I mean, we are saying this publicly.
I always worded as the police department's proposal.
But the word proposal is out there. So to the average person who doesn't, you know, is not as, following everything as, as closely as we are, and is getting bits and pieces of it, they assume there's a proposal to look at. And I think that's what's creating some angst, is that the, the terminology that's being used is, is not helping. I think that's a lot of it, and that's what I've been hearing as well. I've, my phone blows up, and especially after the press conference, for four or five days, it was constantly people yelling at me about why I'm supporting this, because it, it did give the impression that we did. I mean, I don't know, what planet, you wouldn't think that, but, and so I think it's important that we move forward in a very sensitive way of what's truly on the table. And if there's a proposal, the word itself means there's something out there that may happen that we may vote on. I think we have to be very careful about what we, how we word this, and how we're talking about it. Because when these people come to this, this listening session, a lot of them are going to, even though we're saying, it's not a proposal, it's not a reality, it is to them, and they feel that way, and they want to talk about it. A lot of people, that is what they want to talk about, is putting armed guards in schools. And I'm hoping that it can be clean, cleared up right away, that this is not something that's on the table, it's just a conversation. I would love it to be called a conversation versus a proposal. I think that would be more accurate.
Yeah, I would love, I would love it too. Unfortunately, someone made a proposal and we got tied to it accidentally, but we did. I, it just happened, so. I'm also wondering, if we're having a, if we're having this listening session and we know, so is it giving more? I always say, I, I welcome all, all ideas, and I include the police chief's idea. I welcome the idea to come to the table. If the police chief has a speaking role in between the superintendent and CISA seven, does that, does that, could that imply that one line of thinking is like the front- does that, does that, could that imply that one line of thinking is like the frontrunner, unintentionally? I don't know.
Michelle.
If I could offer, Mr. Becker, I think that's a really important point. One of the things that we know right now is that Chris Coller has been, our, our security person, has received numerous, as, as Claudia has, as many of us have. There are many, many ideas out there right now to talk about how to keep schools safe that extend far beyond what the chief has talked about. I think all of these pieces really, you, I know Mr. Coller currently is at a whole conference all around looking at the actual sites themselves, and keeping the school safe within that, that whole environment. So I think there will be, as people really start to pull back and breathe and start to think collectively and look at what are the resources available, I think that there will be, within these next, I think the sixteenth of April, it seems like it's a long ways away, but I would offer that there will be many, many more ideas. And I think that the, the chief referred to it, his idea. I think that it got picked up as a proposal, but it is one idea, and I believe his words, having been in the same room at the same time, is, this is one idea for our community, but the best idea should be the, you know, it's one idea. So I think that there's a wonderful plethora of people really thinking, and I, to, to, to respectfully say what, to your point, Ms. Sitnikow, I believe that there are people who want to talk. They really want to talk about this issue, and, and I believe that some believe that that was the answer. I think that the, the caution with all of this is that the Board of Education is the decision-maker, and no decisions have been made. That would be one piece. The other thing is, there are dollars tied to that, that proposal or conversation as well, and I think that that's the piece that, that has to be out there as well. So, you know, I, I'm not going to suggest how you, how you address this, but more importantly, I would say that there are going to be a lot of ideas coming forward that we may not have even heard about yet.
I just want to say, I, after watching, it was the same day, there was the press conference, NPR literally reported, city and school officials in Green Bay, Wisconsin, are proposing armed guards in forty of their school buildings. That was actually a statement that was made on the radio, and, and, again, I would love to have done something like this. It would have been nice to, to have the, the police do their press conference. The school, uh, district has, you know, we're going to have a conversation about school safety. We didn't, we didn't join the conference, we're, we are listening to what they're saying, we're hearing from the community, there's a lot happening, there's a conference at our security and safety, uh, first, you know, staff member's going to, maybe he comes back, he reports, then we have a conversation. I feel like now we're backpedaling, and it's, it's out there. So I think to, to, as, you know, as much as you can make that clear, that that's not what we're going to be talking about, however you can do that would be great, because you can say it's not, it's an idea, but the community is not thinking that that's what's happening, and that's a fact.
There, there are certainly different ways to look at, at press conferences. I mean, uh, one way to look at it is, as you just mentioned, another one is located, we are in cooperation with the police department. Police department wants to be in cooperation with the school district, trying to let people in our community know that, that we are working together to promote safety. So, you know, I, I, when people pick up on things in, in the media, you mentioned NPR, and I'm really disappointed in that. I learned long ago, when you talk to the press, you can't control what they're going to put out afterwards. And no matter how careful you are, you may come out, snippet, not what you meant by any means, so you can't control that. So we, we're going to control NPR, and it's out there, and it's too bad. You're right, uh, I, I don't know whether anything's been done, uh, yet, in, in terms of this particular issue of getting out through newsletters, or the, uh, terrible, I forget the name of the newsletter, goes across the district out of here. Uh, in there, I think it could be addressed very quickly, right there, and I would think the folks that are expressing angst would be ones that would read that, so.
Well, actually, no, there, a lot of parents don't read that, and that's who I'm hearing from.
Shame on them. You know, you can only put so much information out there, and, you know, that's the vehicle the district uses on the website, so I would have it out there. This is being recorded, is it not? Or not? So, you know, that's going to be out there.
Andrew, are you expecting people who don't come to the engagement session to come to the open forum? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I mean, Saturday morning could be a problem for some too, but I think people might come to both, too. I mean, it's an extra speaking opportunity.
And a lot of, let's be real, a lot of parents are not available, they're taking their kids. There's a lot of activities that happen on Saturdays. I know when I was campaigning for city council, I never did doors on Saturdays, because nobody was home. They're out, they're busy, there's a lot happening, especially, you know, right before spring break, they're, they're probably wrapping up their activities, they're, they're not probably going to be available like they would be on a different day.
With all due respect, if people are that concerned about it, they're going to show up at one of these. Or they're going to put something in writing, or, or contact you to get the information, or other people here.
That's a good point.
You know, I, I, you know, I, I think it was a very good move to move it from one to two, and, uh, two different times.
The second one is not on the weekend, is it?
And for those working parents, and, uh...
So maybe that's the question, it's, um, just to have some guidance on, if parents can't come to those two meetings, are we, um, you know, can we get some feedback ourselves? I would love to put it out there as a question myself, and find out about how people are feeling versus just taking phone calls on it, because right now, it feels like we're not really, I think it's, it's very important, however you can get it out there, that we are not considering putting armed guards into the schools. This is something that was an idea. If you could repeat that somewhere, or, you know, five or six, ten times, would be really helpful.
So, Gloria Wiltzley, Director of Communications. So we have an online newsletter that we're starting. We had one for a while, and just did it out every week. We weren't getting a lot of traction with it, so we're changing the format, so it's coming out this week. In there, Brendan Michel, a column that talks about the, um, safety, the community forums, as well as the meeting that'll be held on March fifteenth, that Chris and Vicki are holding. That will be an information session for parents regarding Ellis training and other things. We will do a robocall to families, an email to families, really, again, trying to push out so that they're aware and in there. It will share that, if they're unable to make the meetings, they can either contact, you know, school principal, they can contact, um, any of you, they can contact us through the community input forum on our website. So, again, there's, you know, and right now, Lily's keeping track of people who are responding through our community forum, uh, input forum, and so she's keeping track of that all in a Google Doc, so that we can incorporate that in your feedback document that Cecil create from the community forums.
And when it comes to teachers, what are we doing for their feedback?
Uh, they can do the same. So I know that the GBA has reached out to them and asked teachers to provide input to, through them, they can do that, or the same thing. They can contact their supervisor, a principal, Michelle, or they could use it through the community input forum.
In, in addition to that, we sent out just this morning a survey, actually, so why do I point to you? I'm sorry. Chris Coller, um, the security and safety coordinator, sent out a survey to building leaders. All of our schools received the survey, and principals have been encouraged to seek input from their, their staff members regarding school safety. Same questions as the community sessions.
We also have our climate and culture surveys that we use to solicit information and feedback from, uh, teachers, but also from, from parents and students as well. So, uh, that, that's another avenue of, of information that we began collecting this year. It will be helpful.
And will those questions, anything pertaining to that be on there?
The questions have been formulated already. There are some, some questions related to, to safety and security, and also a sense of belonging, which we all know, based on some of the recent events that we've seen, that, that connection to adults, and really, that's kind of the theme of, of many of the things we've discussed tonight. How are people feeling that they're accepted and part of the culture, and, and what are we doing to make sure that people have meaningful relationships with multiple adults? That's really critical, and that's, that's a key part of the questioning as well. And we're using that information, uh, not only for our district's strategic planning, but also for our school's success planning, so that we're, we're, uh, working to support and make sure that those relations are strengthened.
Um, when do you anticipate, you said they're going to collect the information, CSU seven is, right?
After the two engagement sessions, right.
Okay, so when do you think that'll come back?
Their turnaround the last time was-
Pretty quick.
Fairly quick.
I think it was a board meeting, uh, right after the Washington meetings that were held, where then they provided, came and provided the input, and then provided a report. So I would anticipate it to be something similar. Basically, what they did was took the comments that people shared and grouped them into, and grouped them into themes, and kind of said, here were the themes that we've heard through the, through the drop table conversations.
But they also supplied the raw data, too. So you could read it if you chose to disagr, you know, not aggregate it.
And then we'll share that with the public?
Well, it'll be a board document, that would be in part of, I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, because I'm, I'm anticipating people will want to see what that looks like.
Yeah, they shared it at a board meeting, so it was attached to the network.
Yes, I don't need to be concerned about this also being an agenda item on the twelfth?
I'm kind of leaning towards, I mean, I don't want to not have people have opportunity to communicate, but in terms of even implying we're going to take action on something where we haven't even heard from the second group, in the engagement session, I would not be in favor of taking action on anything until we've heard from other people that we've invited to participate.
Can we say that we're not going to take action? Can we just clearly state that?
But then what is our purpose?
Then we can't have, I mean, we-
You know, the other option is-
Can it as a discussion item?
You can have it, can you get, just get the word out and have it at the open forum? People are more than welcome to-
But then we can't engage, and people are going to want to engage. Or can we engage? If it's a discussion item on the agenda, then we can engage?
So I, with the ground, with the ground rules, where the last time we discussed this with the board, you wanted only items that would be moving on to action, to be posted for public participation. But that's, those are your ground rules? You can post items on the agenda for public participation if you want items posted for public participation. They don't require action. Those were just, I think the limits that you had set.
Then I think it should be presented as an open forum type thing, that we can engage, but we're not committing to anything because we haven't heard-
Oh, yeah, I don't want to commit to anything, I, but I wanted to, you know, it's, I, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we, I thought maybe we had to do that. So it would be a, posted as a discussion item, but because it's on the agenda, we can engage.
I think we would post it how we posted tonight. We'd post the item under, and also list public participation, so that it's consistent with the other format that we've done on the agenda.
Okay, because the engage is the thing. I don't, I want people to be able to do that, and not just have the open, you know, an off-topic open forum where we have to just sit there, so.
And we do have board meetings the second of April and the twenty-third of April.
Our last engagement session is the sixteenth of April. Is it conceivable we would have our reports back by the twenty-third?
I can certainly ask.
Okay.
I saw that, my little, try to tape it back on to it.
So, can I just ask one more question? So what, what it look like to actually, let's just pretend we're doing it on the twelfth. What does that look like?
I'm sorry, just paying attention. Let me move into my microphone.
And let's just say we're, we're going to do it. So what would have to happen?
For the twelfth? We would post it as an agenda item, and next to it, put it under the public participation section, so that you could engage with the public during that agenda item.
I mean, well, no, I, it seems very doable.
What would the, um, the agenda item say?
Andrew had, say what you had proposed again, Andrew?
Um, school safety discussion item, school safety and security.
But then-
That gives the impression-
My concern is that we're going to discuss, and we don't really have any, you know, we don't have any, any-
Well, sure, we might, we might, we might have, we might have, it's possible, we might have a great new idea come up that we want to discuss, whether we should have it move into a study phase right away. Or we might have a, you know, I-
We have to be careful, though, that we don't replicate the same thing, that we give the impression, okay, we're going to go forward with this on the twelfth, when we haven't heard from the people on April sixteenth.
I think it's unlikely that we would commit to, to anything on the, the twelfth, although certainly not commit to an exclusive course of action on the twelfth, but if we, I don't know, if there was a, if there was a overwhelming, I'm not going to pick a hypothetical, but the, you know, it's not an either/or. If, if the, if we got some great information that a different, a different kind of door screw include, increase school security, you know, safety eighty percent, I would think we'd probably want a direct administration to immediately pursue that new info. Uh, but I think, see, here's, I wish we didn't, I wish I didn't even have to be doing this, and in, in a perfect world, the roundtables would, would be great, and all the public would feel they would be heard, but I'm, I'm not interested in, in all of us having people who already think that this was, this was a setup because of the way it was presented unintentionally, and then, uh, and then they're saying, okay, now, now you let the public talk, but off a set list of questions. And some people are just going to dig in and not even come, unfortunately. And, so this is, this is why we, call it whatever you want, but there has to be a, there has to be an open participation thing, um, and I think that needs to be on the twelfth and as often as possible. This is the hot issue in the, this is the, the big issue in the country right now.
Then I think we just be honest and say, we're, we put this on the agenda specifically to allow people to come and weigh in on it.
Sure, that's all I, that's what I meant.
You know, and then if we want to ask clarifying, if we want to, you know, engage, that's fine, as long as we consider it another engagement-type session, because we've already established it's not a perfect world.
Right. Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm, any, any specific wording I said was to make sure we were covering it legally, or whatever.
So then if we just call it what it is, another opportunity for public engagement about this issue.
Well, especially because there are people that want to come and talk to the school board about this, because they know, and they were told by state representatives that the school board will inevitably have the say at the end of the day on what happens with this, and so there are a lot of people that want to look us in the face and let us know how they feel.
Well, and I think people are coming to the engagement sessions with that same thought in mind, because we're going to be there.
Well, we're, well, some of us will be there. You know, I, I might actually be in town that, that weekend, and we're not going to be a collective, it'll be, from what I see, it'll be facilitated by different people. We can sit at the table and listen, is what it says. So I think it's an entirely different thing to come and tell the school board how they feel.
I, I think we have consensus here-
Yeah, we do.
-about having it on the agenda, to be able to listen to the public about their concerns with this, uh, besides them having the opportunity for the other two, it can go to any or all, uh, and we're here to listen to them and ask clarifying questions. You know, that, I think what we're-
Sounds great.
-have consensus on, is that?
So you're calling the discussion item. Good.
Can I just add how I visualize, I, now that I have time to think about, I visualize your needs after you've clarified that. We already list public participation as an agenda item at the beginning of the board meeting. We could enumerate this right under there, and at that part of the discussion, because it's on the agenda and it's listed as a topic, you would be able to, to engage at that time, rather than having it further down on the agenda, or some awkward place on the agenda. Does that meet your needs?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we'll list it in that section, and then people who want to talk about this can come forward at the public participation time, recognizing it's on the agenda, you're able to engage. The other items that aren't on that agenda, same rules would apply of not being able to conduct business on that agenda item, but because this one is on there, you would be able to discuss.
I, I think this is what you're saying, under that particular item, you have an A, which would be on this topic, and B would be other.
Generally.
So they'd see that, period.
Yes.
All right. Are we finished? Okay. We're going to schedule a board superintendent retreat.
When is, um, when do you want this?
Well, I think it came out of, um, one of the discussions earlier that was being held around special education and having a shared understanding of the work around special education, what's in place, what isn't, um, how, how, um, the restructuring has been supporting the work and, and, um, just getting a clearer handle on it, we're in process. And I, I think it's real, it's challenging now with the dates, but we could be prepared as early as April, or I see Claudia back there and she says yes, or otherwise May. Um, you know, I'm just trying to get, get that out there, to have that conversation because obviously we're serving a lot of students in this area and I'm sure that, um, you see that as a very important part of your work too, to make sure that we have the very best to support all of our children in that, in special education.
So if we look at April, we have three extra Mondays in April. Um, the first one is the ninth. Is that too soon? A month away? I'm looking for Claudia.
That may be.
April ninth? Is that okay?
The presentation we did at the small.
Okay.
I thought you wanted that.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. So, um, does the ninth work for people?
If we're still here.
Oh yeah, that's right.
In theory, does it work?
If there was to be a board member transition, is that effective on the sixteenth, the regular board meet? When is it happening?
The twenty-third. The board meeting is the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Because we have to, because of the timing of the election, we have to have it after a certain.
Right. The new board doesn't, isn't seated until the twenty-third.
Okay, so.
So the ninth, everybody's still here.
So the ninth, it'd still be on.
Um, all right, so it sounds like that works for everybody, assuming it works for Ed too. Um, what time? Five o'clock? Is that good for everybody?
Mm-hmm. We can make that work. Cindy, will you let us all know on our calendars too? Thank you.
So the ninth at five?
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you. It's seeming good.
All right, we're moving forward. The Head Start self-assessment. Sally in the building? There she is.
She is.
I'd like to ensure my, uh, microphone is secure, so.
Good.
For making some choices above my age up, I'm secure with, uh, taping microphone. So, uh, we have Sally Jensen and Ann Barsh presenting on Head Start, both the self-assessment and, uh, clarification on, on, uh, moving forward with Head Start. So, Ann?
All right. I'm afraid to touch this. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Lang and Phil. Um, we are here tonight, Sally Jensen is our Head Start director and also the principal of the Head Start Learning Center. And, um, we have two items. The Head Start assessment is an, is a, um, an assessment that is done yearly according to federal regulations for Head Start. And so Sally will give you a brief explanation of the process and then if you have any questions.
Hi, and thanks for having me. Um, well, it, it is a requirement of our Head Start program to do an annual self-assessment. We measure the effectiveness of our program, the progress that we make on our goals and objectives, and also that we're following all Head Start program performance standards. We begin the process in December, we finish it in February, and then the self-assessment, um, summary and improvement plan are approved by both the school board and by our Head Start Policy Council made up of parents. It then goes along with the grant application, which is due to the federal government by April first. So, um, if you have any questions about the summary or the improvement plan, I'm happy to answer any of those that you might have.
Any questions or comments? Chris?
Uh, a, a roundabout question, shall we say. I, I've always appreciated the format where it talks about strengths and then where you need areas of improvement. It's much nicer way of looking at things than saying where things are wrong and doesn't necessarily mean things are wrong, uh, but one should always be looking for areas to improve in. Uh, just, um, generally, your new site, uh, has that helped facilitate in any way some of the things you've been working on with your students or your, your children, I should say?
Well, um, the, we, we have the new site because of the, uh, full day programming that we started in September. We so far only have, uh, school readiness data from the first trimester. We will within a couple of weeks have the second trimester data. So we're anxious to look at the children who are attending full day services in comparison to those that are attending half-day services. So, um, and I will certainly be sharing that data, uh, when we see it for second trimester as well as end of the year, third trimester data. Um, so, the new building has allowed, um, this group of children that we were currently renting space at St. Peter and Paul, an environment, um, that offers, uh, an area to have our meals, uh, gym for winter, physical development activity that we never had before, a beautiful playground, a gorgeous grounds, um, just incredible, beautiful grounds, trails. Uh, we're so excited to, uh, we haven't been there for a spring or early summer yet, so we're excited. We've started some planting projects with the UW Extension Master Gardeners, so that's been in process since January. So, I mean, I anticipate years of future growth for those children, um, in that environment.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, now we'll move it forward.
Can I just say, thank you? I know, um, it's not an easy thing to, uh, probably have to take on every day, but I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you for that.
And then our second item tonight is, uh, the continuation application summary, and this is to, it's for the grant to, that allows us, it's a, a non, um, I just lost my thought on this. It's a non-competitive grant, so it's our grant for Head Start, but it's also processed at Sally, goes through every year.
It is the continuation application, um, that will fund our Head Start program for another year in the Green Bay Public Schools, beginning July first, two thousand eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And that is also due to the federal government on April first.
Any questions or?
Yes.
Chris?
Are there any runblades on funding for the future, uh, considering the environment in Washington right now and, uh, whom we have there?
Um, I have not, you know, there was the little bit of a threat with the government shutdown. We've, I've experienced those several years, um, has not impacted, um, our grant at all. I've not heard anything negative coming out of Washington. We just remain very positive and so far it's all looking very good. Just receiving the letter in January, um, for the continuation of our grant was positive news, so.
Sally has kept her finger on that pulse for years. We appreciate it.
It's a whole different pulse right now.
Yes, it is a whole different pulse.
Thank you. We can applaud you for your perseverance on that one.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's remarkable.
I didn't bring cookies, but I do thank you so much for your support, always of our little ones. You're wonderful.
Yeah, I was gonna say, oh, and I think John Magus, when he describes your students, um, at that age, maximum cuteness.
Yeah, that is. Absolutely.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sally and Ann. All right, the middle school business education and information technology resource.
Yes, and I'd like to invite up, I'm free to speak, Allison Mannweller, to discuss our, uh, the middle school business curriculum, resources.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, what's going on? Mike Fries, uh, secondary teaching and learning, joined tonight, um, by Alison Mannweller. Uh, I'd like to thank you as always for the opportunity to bring forward these curriculum resource requests this evening. Uh, the requests that come to you tonight, uh, are for two separate content areas at the secondary level, um, and as the separate board members indicate, are hopefully a reflection for you, uh, of our inclusive and comprehensive curriculum process. For each subject area we bring forward tonight, I'll have, um, the curriculum representative speak a little bit about, uh, the process that we followed, as well as, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you, um, that you may have. Um, as I've mentioned before, I always appreciate the, the work of our instructional staff, uh, who teach these courses and who help recommend the resources that are being brought forward. They play a crucial role in helping us make these decisions and recommendations. Uh, I'd also like to mention, I'm particularly happy with the updated processes and policies related to purchasing and procurement that have been, um, activated over the past semester plus. Uh, working with Mr. Elverston in the purchasing department has been wonderful. He brings a wealth of knowledge and experience and he's really been great to work with in helping us make sure that we're, um, getting the best bang for our buck, as well as following all, all the proper procedures, so that's been wonderful. So first up tonight, Alison Mannweller joins me to offer brief remarks, answer any questions you might have about the middle school business education resource request. Um, in case you weren't aware, Alison's primary responsibility in teaching and learning is to serve as our online program support teacher, which includes management and oversight of our online course opportunities. She also helps coordinate efforts related to credit recovery curriculum and options, efficiencies with our secondary, um, transcripts, school counselor meeting liaisons through our, from our department, and the policy implications related to some of our post-secondary opportunities such as youth options or course options. This year, she's also helping us out, uh, with aspects of our career technical education curriculum, um, as Lisa Johnson has transitioned to a new role. And so tonight, Alison will speak directly to some of that work. So, uh, without further ado, take it away.
So I'm wearing a new hat. Forgive me if I don't quite get it all right here. Um, I wanna thank first the teachers that I had the opportunity to work with, um, in identifying the resource that they're recommending that you're going to be considering this evening, uh, the middle school business education teachers and their commitment to the process and, and certainly to the students as well. Um, the information that you already have, walked you through the, uh, review of curriculum that took place back in, um, sixteen, seventeen school year, and during that curriculum review, the middle school business education teachers, uh, felt that it was, uh, a good idea to consider the adoption of a web-based resource for their students because middle school business, well, all business education, the technology changes so rapidly that any, um, any resource has to be one that can adapt quickly as well. And so web-based resource, they felt would be, uh, the best way to go. So an RFI went out in July of two thousand seventeen, and then this fall, that team, that curriculum team came back in and we, uh, looked at that together. We utilized a rubric that considered the overall design, including, uh, the alignment to Wisconsin standards, the, uh, student engagement, the, uh, how, how well it would engage students in the learning process, equity and accessibility for our students, professional learning requirements, uh, technology and support and compatibility with district devices. Uh, overwhelmingly, uh, Applied Educational Systems was the, uh, web-based courseware that they're recommending. Any questions?
Questions, concerns, comments? Chris?
I'll fill the comments today.
You are?
Take a nap if you despise me.
There you go. You're, you're well-rested, good.
I, I, I love the idea of the web-based. I'm just making a comment and, uh, I'm certainly, uh, gonna see that as, as a future. I, I always thought, uh, I, I thought I'd seen my time, maybe I still will, that our students would have most of their textbooks and everything else that way and, uh, I hope sooner than later.
Thank you.
Thanks for, you know, pursuing that.
Brenda?
I'll just piggyback. I, I like the fact that it provides that ability for students to work from where they are independently and, and, um, it sounds like, you know, while, while they're able to work, the teacher's able to give better one-on-one support, um, rather than trying to teach the whole class at one time.
Anyone else?
And I think, and I'll just put a plug in it. I mean, I think the more we can do that in terms of providing that opportunity, and I mean, not it, not that they're online all class period, but to, you know, to have those online opportunities, um, I do, I do think are, is helpful for students that are, you know, have come to the class with a variety of, of skillsets and, and background knowledge already, and it just provides the ones that are ready to take off the ability to do that in the program, and then the ones that need more support can, can, can get that.
Thank you. I would offer that, I didn't mention one of the things Alison has been working on over the past few years, is in conjunction with some grant, mini-grant opportunities through the Wisconsin E-School Network has provided chances for our adult staff to improve their ability to deliver the range of blended to online to interactive opportunities, and so that has been kind of growing organically. Uh, we had some staff attend a, a blended online piece earlier this year over from West in December, so that's something that we do seek to try to partner adult capacity with access to devices, so that we can make wise choices or recommendations relative to these pieces, hopefully. Thank you.
Thanks, Alison. You wore the hat well. Next, the pre-calculus and advanced placement calculus resources.
And Mike Fries will be staying up and be joined by Cindy Cantwell.
So, again, I'd like to welcome, uh, Cindy Cantwell. She'll be sharing the details related to our pre-calculus and advanced, uh, placement calculus, uh, resource requests. Cindy too, plays a multitude of roles for us, the teaching and learning department. She's on point for us for secondary math curriculum, as well as our intervention support. For the past two years, uh, you may not know that she also has partnered with the Northeast Wisconsin Manufacturers Alliance to continue work that, uh, Marie Visti had done, uh, to help generate the Get Real Math, uh, Applied Mathematics video series. Get out on the internet and check those out. You'll see, uh, Cindy's contributions there. Uh, this year, we've also been really fortunate to have her help us shepherd the work to improve access to computer science, uh, curriculum via our burgeoning partnership with the Microsoft Teals Program. Um, and she's a main representative for us in the Turbo Charge Math Subcommittee as part of a work with NWTC and EW Green Bay. I mentioned all those components relative to Cindy's roles because it's part of, um, supporting a comprehensive, um, frankly, pre-K through, through twelve mathematics curriculum scope and sequence, and as you'll hear in a little while from the elementary side, the work that's done throughout our system results in great, greater access to coursework such as pre-calculus and AP calculus, among other things, um, some real dynamic opportunities. So, without further ado there, Cindy, if you could talk a little bit about the pre-cal and calc piece, please.
Sure. Thank you. Um, I'd also like to start by saying, um, I really enjoyed working with the calculus and pre-calculus teachers also, I mean, you can see their names in the board report. Um, they were very thoughtful, student-centered, very professional, enjoyed the work tremendously. Um, last school year, we, uh, met as pre-calculus and calculus groups to look at content essential documents, which had never been, um, written, and the, um, course overviews and the curriculum app, so that was completed last year. This year then we took, took a look at resources. And it had been over ten years since we had, um, looked at pre-calculus and calculus resources, so they didn't even have a digital component. So now, um, what you see before you is the proposal, um, the major focus as we looked at resources was curricular alignment, definitely student accessibility and engagement, which a lot of the digital, uh, resources really allow for more of that. Um, and definitely depth of knowledge as, as math resources are changing, there's, um, a lot more focus on deeper understandings. Um, so the resources that were selected for your approval have met or exceeded those expectations and the teachers are really looking forward to implementing those if they are approved, especially, like I said, the digital and, um, the updated exercises that students can access the material in different ways. So, thank you for your consideration.
I think it's worth mentioning that there is a request for classroom set access, rather than.
Yes.
Everybody gets a, you know, a, it'll be, there will be physical ones available if approved at this point from the proposal that they requested, so we're moving along that spectrum.
Right. So there will be classroom sets, just in case they're, you know, needed, um, but everyone will have the digital ebook and, and other resource access.
Can I be assured that this is something that, um, uh, an overwhelming majority of, of staff is, is good with? A move from the, everyone has a book to not necessarily everyone has a book?
The, this pre-calculus and the calculus teachers that were part of the team and went back and talked to their, their fellow colleagues, there was, there's not a whole lot of pre-calculus and calculus teachers out there. So we, we had most of them on the team and they, they understand, um, that it, one of the things that they noticed with the current books is teach, the students were coming in and saying, what do you mean we can't access a book online? We only have the hard copy. Um, so students are very much, um, ready for that digital move and I think teachers, um, uh, being more student-centered and understanding that are ready to make that move too, yes. Yes. They're ready to do that, yes.
Do we find when we do that, that for students for whom the, to check out the physical book perhaps in an extended period, does there, is there enough to go around in those cases?
There will be ordered, there is a number of extras ordered too besides the classroom set.
Okay. I just always want to, sometimes there's a committee, you know, that does maybe, probably less likely when we're talking about a subset like high level math teachers, but just making sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Put that forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Nice work.
Okay, the K-5 mathematics pilot update and resource request.
This is another math opportunity to share. It's considerably more extensive. And we have a variety of people who will be coming up to share in the presentation, but Ellen Van Pei and Nellie Nigha as well as Gwen, Dr. Gwen, sorry, Dr. Stott and a variety of teachers as well who took part in the process, quite a number of people who have been part of our training. We engaged in a pretty deep process of looking at, a very deep process of looking at math resources last spring, but it was determined at that time that we wanted to move forward with a more extensive pilot. Before we make a huge investment as a district moving forward on a new math resource that is a significant departure from what we're doing now, we wanted to make sure that it was effective in a wide variety of settings. And so Dr. Chartier has really, really exciting information both about the results of the pilot, consideration of next steps, but I think most importantly, the great results that we're seeing in the pilot sites that are using the program. I would also venture to say that this is not easy work. It's a lot of lift, it's a lot of change in the way that people are teaching, but you also see from the staff surveys and the work that was done, even though it was hard work, people saw it as extremely valuable work. So without further ado, I'd like Nancy to share.
Thank you, Mr. Magus. And thank you very much for the opportunity to return back to the board to update you on our math pilot the last time we sat here. We did ask, the board asked us to implement a pilot of a smaller scale, basically due to capacity. And that was in June. And so we're back with the update as Mr. Magus mentioned. And before I go any further, there are several of us presenting tonight. And I did ask Dr. Langenfeld, I know it's out of the ordinary to have so many different educators come to the table, but I thought it very important that they share their story and the depth of their journey and what they have done to even make this night possible. So for those who aren't maybe as aware of what we do in the Teaching and Learning Department, not everyone behind us is a member of the Teaching and Learning Department, but the work we do is we collaborate with many entities and stakeholders in the district to bring forward a collaborative and meaningful resource. But also because we do support each other in our schools, in our instructional practices, this is truly a collaborative effort moving forward. With that being said, I'd like to first open just with a little bit of how the framework of this presentation will be. Going to just quickly review the purpose of the pilot, the background of the pilot, the measures that were determined as in June we set forth our pilot proposal. Then I will be joined at the table by some of our team, core team members to discuss and to share with you the intensive professional development and then also our data results and multiple points of data results. And then the budget and then the budget request. So that'll be the makeup of our presentation tonight. We couldn't have followed a better group than the equity group to bring what we have to bring forward with, for you tonight. Because we truly believe that the pathway to proficiency is through equity. And so when we use the same symbol from the Department of Public Instruction, we share that collaboration as I just mentioned with high-quality instruction and with using data in a purposeful manner, in a purposeful way. But once we get into curriculum instruction, resources, so on and so forth, it even begins to grow further, begins to grow out. And you'll see that every single component of continuous improvement will be touched on tonight. And because of the time we could spend most of the night talking about the interconnectings of equity and how we, our goal is to get all of our children to proficiency. The purpose of the pilot, we've set out to identify the professional development that we would have to have to implement such a rigorous curriculum. We also wanted to implement best practice strategies to support Bridges Mathematics and Grades K-5. We wanted to establish the effectiveness of current observation tools for tracking program progress. We weren't set to just do something to do it, but we absolutely wanted to make sure what we're bringing back to you was of quality and rigor. We wanted to monitor the length of time that teachers would need to become comfortable with the resource, the assessments and supplemental material. And just a little insight to that as we were researching even what type of resources and many resources, till we narrowed it down to Bridges. Every school district we spoke to, every educator we spoke to, until it's about November, December, when teachers really felt they're in the groove and taking on this intensive new learning. Also, to determine if Bridges allows for our students to demonstrate the same or greater knowledge as compared to the similar demographics of schools using a math expressions. All of these purposes will be, there'll be evidence of our work over the past three months. Well, now it's about six months, but the majority of this work and data collection was over a three-month period. We also set conditions for the pilot. And the conditions for the pilot, the pilot schools were not to be held to the same expectation of the other schools in the district to utilize the math expressions adopted resource. The monitoring plan will be conducted for the full academic year, although we come to you this evening. We will carry this pilot out until the end of this school year. Each participant would have a trainer to assist with daily questions and to implement implementation adjustments. And each trainer will keep a running log of personal learning, professional learning topics as well as dates and times. And all pilot data will be collected, analyzed, and the findings will be communicated via math resource recommendation. And some of the measures that we brought forth and we will be reporting on tonight, the staff, we implemented a staff implementation survey to collect quantitative data in addition to the academic data that's identified in the evaluation plan. The survey results that will be covered this evening will also be submitted again. I believe it's in May, we will survey, resurvey the staff for the end of the year after they've had additional time to teach more units of study. We also have a student comparison group that received instructions through math expressions compared to a normal curve equivalent, collect the data, I'm sorry, collected during the district administration of star mathematics and early star literacy at the fall, mid, year, and spring. Bridges pre and post-unit tests were asked, we asked grades two through five to collect this data as part of this pilot. Advantage math recovery assessment, which is already one of our district benchmark assessments, data was collected for the purposes of tonight's presentation. That window had not closed and we did not want teachers to have to assess earlier than they were prepared to. And so the advantage math recovery assessment data is not a part of our presentation tonight, but we do now have that information and could make sure that you get the results of that. Also the star math and early literacy, normal curve equivalency, and then also the meetings and the site visits that were held with each of the schools that are identified and the teams and the collaborative learning team meetings that we attended to listen to teachers to observe in classrooms and also to help us to construct that implementation survey. And next, I'd like to call forward some of our team members. And a little bit of the way we're going to work this tonight, they're going to come forward, introduce themselves, and they will then share with you how they serve the district.
Hi, I'm Ellen Van Pei, I'm principal of Tank Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Jackie Ingles. I am a math interventionist at Martin and Tank Elementary as well as a district Bridges math trainer.
I'm Amber Byrne. I am the math interventionist at Dode Elementary as well as Langley Elementary, also a Bridges trainer for the district.
And I'm Natalie Nienheist and I'm the principal at Dode Elementary.
As trainers, we led the initial two-day training for Bridges in Mathematics called Getting Started Workshop. All pilot teachers participated in this training in August. This training included the components of both Bridges and Number Corner. We also, to support teachers, we provided follow-up professional development in the areas of assessment and instruction. Teachers were provided with Bridges assessment requirements for kindergarten through fifth grade. Then they were introduced to scoring guides for pre and post-assessments as well as electronic spreadsheets for progress monitoring and data collection. Teachers were given time to review assessments and enter student data into those spreadsheets. We also, with using the Bridges Grade Level Assessment Map and skills across the grade level charts that were provided with the Bridges resource, teachers collaborated to identify when Common Core math standards were targeted for mastery and how they were distributed throughout the year in Bridges units and Number Corner. We also looked at data trends by analyzing unit assessments, identifying students who were not meeting standards, determining if the standard was expected to be mastered. And if not, we located when the standard would reoccur and created action plans for students. Teachers also collaborated to align report card skills to Bridges concepts by using the skills across grade levels chart and grade level Bridges trimester math progress reports provided in the assessment guide.
Focusing next on instruction, implementation guides were provided from the training team to teachers. These were provided for both the units of study and Number Corner. Teachers were given collaborative time along with their trainer in the building to prepare for the upcoming month for both Number Corner focus and the unit upcoming. Using assessment data, teachers were given time to collaborate around small group lesson planning to address the needs of students and determine different ways to scaffold based on the assessment results. They also spent time exploring the numerous online resources throughout the Bridges site, including digital display resources that are provided that align to the different lessons that could be incorporated in daily lessons, as well as exploring blog posts related to the current unit of study. We also looked at ways of implementing the Math Learning Center apps that align to Bridges.
So essentially, I mean, our trainers have told you what they provided, but the biggest thing, this is a lot of change, you know, for the teachers to be taking on. And the materials were difficult for the teachers to figure out exactly how to do it because it was a different way of learning. It was more of what we call a constructivist approach where the kids learn by doing. And so it wasn't sit and get at all. It was where the kids needed in-depth time with the materials. And that requires a whole different type of teaching. So when we did this, we knew we had to support the teachers tremendously to help them feel very comfortable. And that support involved, you know, even just looking at those two days, things like we're going to do some training in the morning, we're going to give you time to collaborate in the afternoon because you need to wrap your head around exactly what this is going to look like. And time to figure out how to do this in your classroom. And then having the math interventionist or our trainers be there as a guide on the side for those teachers was really, really important. So having that person there, boots on the ground, to answer the emails, to help send the link to the blog. So hey, here's this great resource for you. That was huge. So the teachers could then say, oh yeah, that's a really neat thing that I could do. Provide that just-in-time learning in September so that when they were ready to do the pre and post-assessments, they were ready and could then begin to implement. When we were trying to figure out, okay, I know how to do AVMR, I know how to do Dreambox, I kind of get these workplaces, how do I put it all together in a workshop? Helping them to figure out how to do that, our trainers were there. The professional learning is a really important component that if you don't provide that, you're not going to have the success. Because we provided that. And then we had our monthly meetings along with our early releases and our collaborative team time where they could work together, talk it through. And, you know, it wasn't all sugar and spice. There was times, it was tough at first. And I would say September and October were not easy.
No.
It involved a lot of planning time. So we had to really look at our meeting structure and say, you know, as we're mapping out our meetings, this one's got to go. This one's got to go. We got to keep this. This has to go because teachers needed time for planning, extensive planning, because this resource involves very extensive planning. So you really have to look and decide what you need to keep and what you got to get rid of. You can't have distractions. You've got to be able to maintain your focus. So that was something that we did as well. Also, I think one of our really big ahas was we had at our December early release looking to say, all right, right now, this is the time where we looked, okay, our kids did this and this for our first couple of units. Which one were major clusters that they were supposed to do well on and which ones were just supporting clusters? That was kind of an aha for teachers to say, oh, that's okay. It's all right if they didn't know that so well because this was the major cluster they were supposed to get according to the Common Core. And it was a great reminder because they had been so involved in just trying to get everything done, maybe they forgot about the fact that they need to do that. Then they could dive into, all right, now I need to backwards map and I need some time to figure out what do I need to prepare for by the next report card and what are my major clusters that I got to prepare for? So really, the just-in-time thinking, being ready for what do I need to plan for, what do I need to prepare for, that's what led them to their success.
I'd like to add just something with the grade level too. Having that grade level collaboration meeting and having not just everybody together all the time was key too because there's so many things that were very specific and teachers could set that agenda. And they came and they said, this is what I need, this is where I'm going, these are the questions I'm having at this point. And because it is very different as far as the whole way of teaching, there were a lot of questions I think that were also grade-specific because a lot of it was about what should I be expecting from students in fourth grade, fifth grade, kindergarten. And I think having that, and you did the same thing with the grade level meetings, that freed up a lot for the staff. And also making sure, I think, and just as we look forward, those first three months were key. And we were told over and over again, December is kind of when the light bulb comes on. And I would say, yeah, we hit it right around Thanksgiving and I gave thanks because it was like, it was just so great because December was even for us too, that moment of starting to really understand how things kind of looped in together and then also what the expectations were and how to understand what fifth grade and fourth grade, how they could work together to sort of figure out some of these things. So.
And we did some vertical mapping too, and I'm guessing you did as well, where when we did have that whole group, we looked vertically. So we're doing this in kindergarten and that was promoted as well because we had spent time going into each different grade level and seeing how the rigor increased all along the way. And then when they had the discussions, you could say, yeah, you know, I- And then when they had the discussions, you could say, yeah, you know, I saw this, and then I saw this. And then the teachers had the ahas through that discussion. So if someone was struggling here, and then they heard another teacher mention something, they began to see the connection. So in a nutshell, that tells a little bit about how we tried to support them.
One other thing, we both did half-day grade level collaborations. I think yours, you had title funds for. We did not have the title funds. But what we did is we just did something different. Myself and another staff member, Angela Salm, our school social worker. She and I would just take students for an afternoon, and we kind of coupled it with behavior expectations. And we did just kind of expectation bootcamps with our students. But that would free up my staff from about lunchtime on through about four o'clock. So they could get about four solid hours of collaborative time. They didn't have to plan for subs or anything. They just were able to do their work. So there are differences, you know, people can be creative. If you don't have funds one way, there might be other ways to pool or think about other ways of using that time and having more bang for the buck on that.
Thank you. Next up, you'll be hearing from Stephanie. Sir.
Extensive planning with all this. Is that extensive planning that's going to go here on? Or was it just while they're learning how to do this?
I think initially, I think it's going to take a little bit more. But then, this type of math preparation is different than what I would call the old math expressions type, where you could just turn to the page and pretty much wing it. And you didn't really need as much prep. You're going to need more prep throughout with this. You will get better at it, but it's going to require more prep.
And I would also say that it's something that it's almost, it's easier to do with the kids than to try to just read through the documents and sort of gain your understanding. It's easier to put into play and to see the understanding. So.
A second question, if I may. Could you give a brief example of a lesson that would be taught this way? I mean, how would be taught as your term, I believe, I enjoyed, sit and get as opposed to this method?
Well, for example, we know how we were taught multiplication, right? Where we work from the right to the left and we carry it over. Students are taught what that multiplication's groups. So there are array models that they're looking at. And there's different manipulatives that they're forming groups and looking. There's three groups of four, and they're able to count them. And that's at the lower level. And then it builds upon with, I'm thinking, what are those, the side markers for them to actually physically build an array for them to see it. The algorithm doesn't come into play until.
Fourth grade.
So oftentimes, we find that that algorithm for multiplication is introduced way too early when the students don't have an understanding of what multiplication really is. And through with Bridges, they have experiences through workplaces, the problems investigations, as well as Number Corner, for them to develop that conceptual understanding of what multiplication is.
Through visualization.
Yes.
I would also add that oftentimes, when they're doing different activities, they're asked to come up with different strategies. And welcome to come up with different strategies. And you could have something that would normally be an algorithm. You'd just consider it something straight multiplication. But kids can come up with, you know, five, six different strategies and be able to use many of them very, like, in and out and depending on what seems easier for what problem they have.
What's going to happen with AVMR at this point? Is it an accurate statement? I've been told that there are teachers that have just finished up training with that, and they actually haven't had time to apply that in the first place. What is going to happen with AVMR?
AVMR aligns really nicely with Bridges. And our teachers are using AVMR to assess where the students are at. And then that helps them to create their workshops so that then they can maybe have this group over here working on this workplace, this group over here working in a small group, this group over here, just depending on whatever skill they're at. So they use AVMR to assess where they're at and to then group the kids according to exactly where they need to be, what their level of understanding is.
So this won't be replacing it? It's just.
No, they're very much.
There's time built into what are called the workplaces, where students are working independently in small groups on specific topics. And so there is time built into that, that AVMR activities have been placed into those slots as well. So some students are working on Bridges workplace. Meanwhile, another group of students might be doing an AVMR activity. So the pilot schools are still doing AVMR.
The AVMR gives great diagnostic information. And so it helps teachers with, especially for kids who need interventions or specific interventions, to plan around that.
I have some questions about the survey, and I don't know if I'll be asking.
That will be coming up.
Okay.
If that would be something.
So, you know, when you're talking about the, you're talking about the math from right to left multiplication, which sometimes is the way to go. I guess specifically comparing, is that what we were redoing, just that and math expressions? And now we're doing multiple models here? Because I was just trying to clarify if you were talking about, you know, math expressions versus this? Or, you know, 30 years ago versus Bridges?
Just traditional, and then also in math expressions, there is those. And there's other models also in math expressions. But we find that learning the conceptual understanding of multiplication starts earlier, starting with kindergarten, with them forming groups and talking about groups and how many are in a group. And then every year builds upon that skill. And they do, they will get to the standard algorithm. But they also have that opportunity to use multiple strategies that work for them, as Natalie was sharing.
One of the biggest differences, and maybe I don't want to speak to multiplication, but just in general, when they're learning a skill, is the amount of time that is given for the students to actually learn that skill and work with materials. And so they're working with the materials, they're working on their whiteboards, they're using little pictures to draw it out. And then they put it into some kind of an equation, and then they discuss that. So they're spending a lot of time working through that. Whereas in the past, you might have zipped through 20 different equations that they didn't understand at all. You might spend 20 minutes on one. And in that one, they're working through multiple aspects of that because they're constructing their understanding of what that means in multiple ways.
And what's neat with Bridges is it's just distributive practice. So it may be introduced in Unit Two. But when we're talking about when those skills would be mastered, that skill may not be mastered until Unit Five. So that's why we look at these resources, like Skills Across Grade Levels and the Assessment Map, to see when those Common Core standards are required for mastery. But it is more of a distributive practice with Bridges.
I would also say that when you would go into a Bridges classroom, you would see the students doing so much more talking about math and so much more engaged because it is about their learning and they're helping each other. I think one of the more interesting observations that I've had numerous times is seeing children, whether it's the highest student in the classroom or one of the lowest students, being able to come to some understanding of how to do something, but also explaining to people and seeing that academic conversation happening. And, you know, I don't know how in-depth we're getting, but for students who are English as a second language, and some of our students, especially again, if we're looking at students that, if we're looking at equity, that academic language is huge. And where that propels kids and where that takes them in their learning is huge.
And I would also say that for those of us who have had the opportunity to see it in practice, and we'd like to invite the board as well for those opportunities, and I know some people have partaken in that. The learning that takes place in the Bridges classroom is really exciting to watch. The kids are deeply engaged. They're learning the deeper conceptual knowledge, and they're able to apply it in ways that I haven't seen before. And I think when you see not only the survey results, but the results in math performance that are coming up shortly, you'll really see how that's starting to pay off. And again, as we said, there's work involved. It's going to require new ways of working and thinking. But when asked, when we asked staff about it, is this a worthwhile lift? And overwhelmingly, they said that it would not be moral for us to not consider taking this forward as a whole district. We really felt like it was important, but we wanted to make sure that we were hitting within the zone of what we could accomplish. And so if we're looking at what is our big piece of work next year for elementary? What is our new learning? It's around this. And really, as Ellen said quite well, we have to think about what else is it that we can take off the table? What is it that we can say, we're going to pause on this? Or we're going to just make sure that we're reinforcing this and not taking on a lot of new additional learning? But this is really something that, as the board has said, that you're very interested in seeing our state report cards improve and not just show growth, but deep proficiency. This is a measure that I think of anything I've seen in my years here so far, only two of them. But this is very impressive as far as what the results will be. And I think once you see the results that Gwen will share, it'll add to some things as well.
That really would encourage people to go over there and see it in action.
I got to spend some time a couple weeks ago at Chapel, observing these, the multiple strategies and the manipulation of materials and the approaching it this way. And then if that didn't work going around this way, and the children talking to each other, and the. It was frankly thrilling. And I would second what John said. It's just really kind of a joy to behold. But not to take away from the heavy lift. It was a heavy lift, and I want to acknowledge that, that, you know.
And I was also able to, I was at Tank and was able to watch it all unfold as well. Most of it in Spanish, so that was interesting to me. But it was, it was, it was great to watch.
So, and I, if I could just add, when you hear a kindergartner define the word congruent. I heard that. Were they first graders?
First graders.
Sorry. Still quite impressive. They were very little people.
So I guess, I guess this, this question would probably be for John. Where does the, so Bridges is a K-5, exclusively K-5, right? Pre-K-5, thank you. How about the, how do we feel about the transition from our K-5 program to our, to our 612 program? And did we have, do we have some staff involvement in that? So the. We'll definitely have additional work to do. And I think that the, sorry for the feedback. But one of the challenges that districts face when they adopt Bridges is that the kids, as they exit elementary, are doing so well that we have to really start rethinking, what do those initial middle school and high school math courses look like? Because the kids are coming with a much deeper proficiency than we've seen before. They're actually meeting really the rigorous standards that we have in the state. So if we're looking at proficiency currently, we're not meeting proficiency with the number of kids. But suddenly, relatively suddenly, we should be able to see some changes that are going to require the math courses to be taught in different ways at a higher level. I would also say that that focus on constructivist learning and constructivist math approaches, not just math, but it's also part of the workshop that we do with our reading and writing. It's, it does change the way learning takes place as far as it being something more personalized and owned by the student and developed around where their needs are and what is their next zone of proximal development. So really, we won't be able to teach everybody kind of in the same place on the conveyor belt. Not that that's the only thing we do or what we do at all. And I don't mean to insult our secondary math people by any means. They're hardworking, great people. But we're going to have to really think about what does our sixth grade look like? What does our seventh grade? And I know that Mike and Nancy, and that's the beauty of having a department with two people specializing and working very closely together, have had initial conversations about that. And we're also exploring with other districts, what have they done to make sure that that transition is as successful as possible? Because we've got like, for some of these schools, some of these attendance areas, we're talking about a few months to have the middle school ready to go. And we're talking about a middle school that's going to have some Bridges kids coming in and some math expression kids coming in and then being intermixed in the same class. So that's a big deal. It is, it is a challenge. But again, it's kids coming in at a higher level with greater proficiency. And I think that for most of us in math, that's a problem we haven't had. It's something we need to take very seriously. But it's a problem we would much rather welcome than what we've had with a large number of kids needing intervention. And I think what we're going to be able to do in the very near future is rather than put as much resource, and you'll see a little bit from the planning, that we're going to shift some of the resources, at least the expertise in our resources, from intervention to capacity building. Because you're right, Mr. Becker, that we have to really make sure that not only the teachers who are working in the elementary levels are geared up and ready, but that the secondary teachers are ready as well. But to be honest, the piece with the true pilot is you don't, we had a really good idea that this was going to have positive payoff. I think for even us, it was surprising what great payoff we had. But when you do a pilot, you don't necessarily know that it's going to be productive. You go into it with an open mind, with hope that it's the best material possible, with the anticipation that the payoff is going to be there. But we're seeing pretty significant gaps in the comparative group compared to the group that was using Bridges, and it's very positive. So I think that we really have to work with Mike Fries and Tom and the secondary folks to make sure that that's in place. But they really have a collective core group of people that are doing a lot of work there. Sandy Cantwell, who we just heard from. They can, they can address that in depth so that they're ready for the difference. Will there be work to do? Will it be easy? No, it won't be easy. And I think you guys have seen it with blood, sweat, and tears. But will it be worthwhile? That, I would say, has been resoundingly yes, and you'll see that from the survey data. But I would like to make sure that that can speak for itself. Ms. Sitnikow?
Sorry.
I was monologuing. Go ahead.
No, I, when will, or when, and like, when do you anticipate the rest of the interventionists will actually be trained for this?
And actually, that is addressed in the upcoming slides.
Okay, I'm jumping ahead then.
And actually, Dr. Shartier probably has better answers than I do to a number of these questions. But we can invite our principals and teacher leaders to back up at the table if it may be for additional questions. Dr. Wagner, you had a final question? Did you have a question, Dr. Wagner?
No.
I'm sorry.
The lady's trying to get in here.
Ms. Sitnikow, did you have one more before they?
I think, I'll just wait.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, you'll be hearing from Stephanie Zander.
Like, what we actually heard through that was the coherency. And as I had mentioned before, this will take a team. And you can see the passion from the building leadership to the support system that is put in place. Our trainers have gone through extensive training, not only when they boarded on to be a trainer, but throughout this entire year. So I preface that because of your question regarding then what if? Are we going to add additional trainers and so on, so forth? So also, the question around Advantage Math Recovery. Advantage Math Recovery is a math intervention, but the assessment is a part of it that bridges between your assessment or your intervention and your universal instruction. Bridges is our universal, going to be our recommendation, our universal resource. Bridging a coherent pathway for children from if they are in an intervention and needing additional help into our universal. But also, we are very fortunate this year that Stephanie, and she'll introduce herself in just a moment. She's one of our gifted and talented resource teachers. And we are very fortunate this year that she joined the Nicolay Training Team as to get insight on what might this do for our extended or gifted learners in our district.
My name is Stephanie Zander. I am a gifted and talented resource teacher at Nicolay, Webster &amp; Baird. The first topic I wanted to address today was servicing the gifted learner, specifically an increased challenge. Bridges has been providing my gifted and talented students with challenge this year. When I am with gifted and talented students during their workplaces, I've noticed they are incorporating multiple thinking processes. For example, a fifth grade. For example, a fifth grade group I worked with had the opportunity to apply the math skill, select a strategic move on the board by solving the problem in multiple ways, and then plan a move to increase the difficulty for their partner, all in the same workplace. I've also noticed an increase in challenge during number corner. Students are regularly analyzing multi-step patterns. For example, second graders were using world flags to apply fractional concepts and discuss complex patterns. There's a high level of reasoning involved. I also wanted to touch on differentiated materials. Bridges comes with differentiated challenge materials that can be utilized with advanced learners during their workplaces. This allows the teachers to focus on student learning without spending a great deal of extra time preparing more rigorous activities. It seems easier for teachers to provide resources to advanced learners at an appropriate level of challenge compared to with math expressions. Finally, professional development. In the Bridges Professional Development at Nicolay, we regularly take time to examine each workplace as a grade level team and discuss the differentiation for advanced learners as well as those that need additional support. We read the Bridges suggestions for differentiation and then discuss as a team how to implement them, ensuring that our advanced learners are being challenged every day.
I'm Brittany Baronic. I am the math interventionist at Nicolay and then also a part of the training team. So I trained Nicolay. And Stephanie works a lot with the workplaces, so that independent workshop time. But then I just want to also add, in the actual universal, that Tier One, where all the classes together. Bridges does a lot of supporting teachers with questioning and prompts to support that mathematical discourse. Teachers have access to all grade level materials. So if there is an advanced student that you wanted to align your standards with the next grade level above, that is an option. All the activities are application-based, so no longer just sitting and doing problems over and over again. They're able to apply their new learning. Encourages multiple strategies. She touched on number corner patterns. They're very, what they call low floor, high ceiling. So our lowest students have access to the patterns and there are advanced strategies that actually go above grade level within number corner patterns. And then also the pre-assessments. So pre-assessments allow for teachers to give specific differentiation based on each individual student's needs before the unit even starts.
Any questions around the gifted and talented component of Bridges? And the differentiation pieces? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we're going to take a look at, I'm sorry, we're going to actually have, Gwen, come on up. And we're going to be taking a look at our Bridges, our data and our data overview. And Dr. Stramp has been an instrumental part of this component of our pilot and also our outcomes in ensuring that we have aligned our pilot to have clear measures of what it is we were hoping to achieve.
So thank you, thank you for the opportunity to come and bring you some data, some exciting times, let's see. I think I need Lori to answer. Okay. We are, thank you so much. Yes. And maybe if you, even if you want, I could...
And so the data that we'll share is, it is a 36-page report on data. So we'll be presenting in summary of the data. But if you have additional follow-up questions based on the data that's shared, we can, we can follow up in greater depth individually as well.
Okay, great. Very good. Thank you. Okay, excellent. Okay, so as Dr. Shartier laid out, one of our measures, we were going to use normal curve equivalent as obtained from our Renaissance Learning Product, Star Mathematics and also Star Early Literacy. We'd be working with a normal curve equivalent, so we'll go through that information. And we did this during our regular assessment window, so the students didn't have extra assessments. So we collected data in October during that window and we collected data then just recently in January and February. So we'll go on to the next one. And as Dr. Shartier mentioned, we had seven schools in the pilot, Chapel, Danes, Dody, Fort Howard, King and Nicolay. And then on the next slide, what we see is this was the information that we collected in the fall. And how I went through and constructed the measurements was to look at each grade level. As we pointed out in the evaluation plan, we were trying to build a comparison group, but to find a whole comparison school was, you know, not every school is exactly like the others. So it was looking at each grade level and through the normal curve equivalent, you can establish a grade level or a class average. So then I took each class and tried to find another class within the district that was a match, so to have like similar learning. So what we have then is in grade one, now this is just for the pilot schools, those seven schools, there were 330 students in grade one that completed Star Mathematics, that we had a normal curve equivalent, and their average NCE was 45.91. And you can see the same then took place for each of the grade levels. That whole entire cohort in the fall pilot had an NCE of 41.486. Okay? So then the next time we had an opportunity to collect data, it was then in the winter, and you can see that same setup. We did have a little fluctuation in the numbers. We now have 1,693 students, where before we had around 1,700. So we, we have a few students different. And at this point, it's not an exact match between the fall and the winter. I just wanted to have you see everybody who completed the assessment and was in that grade level cohort. But we can see that the, now the average for that cohort is 46.388. So there was an increase, and we'll see that on the next slide then. And you can see on the far right, the change. So for first grade, from fall to winter, it was an NCE change of 7.28 NCE points. It, remember, it's an equal interval, so we do know the distance between one point and the next, just like a thermometer. Each point makes, has a measure. And usually when you're moving a whole group, so now this is 330 first grade students. So to move a whole group and to move the average, it takes a lot. And usually when you're looking at a cohort or a class, if you could have two or three, four NCE points would be phenomenal. Now, we're looking at a student, one individual student, you might want to see five, 10, 15. But to move 330 people, seven NCE points, which is a quarter of a year plus in growth, that's really great. That's wonderful. Grade two, the growth was 4.71, so about a quarter of a year. And we'll be talking about grade two as we go through this. Grade three, 6.55. Grade four, 2.83. Grade five, 3.14, for a total change for that cohort of just under five NCE points. And I know Dr. Shartier will talk about the grade four and grade five and that learning that takes place at that. So, and the fact that we're maybe not seeing as much growth there, there's, there's reason behind that. We can, we can put that together. So the reason I brought this together here with the change just within the pilot school is because as we move forward, there was one school I had to take out of the, of the group. When I said when I was trying to find a match, there was one school I couldn't find another match that was close enough. So that meant they were at one point and I would have to pick a school that was maybe five NCE points away. And it was in multiple grade levels. So this is all seven schools here, and when we move forward until we get to kindergarten, we're only going to be looking at six of the schools and a comparison. And that does make a little bit of difference in the growth that we have at first grade as we move on. But it was a way to control for that outlier of those classes where I couldn't find a match. Okay? So, so just to have this in mind of how the pilot schools went. Any questions so far on this part? Okay, thanks. Okay, then we'll keep rolling on. Oh, sorry.
Twenty-five words or less for the public and refresh my memory. NCE again means...
Oh, yes, thank you. NCE is a normal curve equivalent and on, it's a, the normal curve equivalent runs from zero to 100 with 50 being the mean or the middle and 50 being the entry to proficiency. So when we look at a number of less than 50, that means a student or a group isn't quite a proficiency and over 50, from 50 to 100, that is proficiency going to the right. Okay? And it's based on the normal curve, so the bell curve. So literally, the NCE means it's the equivalent of this number on the normal curve, its placement on the normal curve. So, okay, thank you, good question. Okay. So overall, the observation, or one observation from this, you might be asking, well, that's great that you had this growth during this school year, what does that mean from the growth from the end of the previous school year? Because with an NCE, we want to make sure, and particularly for closing the gap, the students just don't land at the same NCE score. It needs to move forward. So I ran a correlation on that and there is a statistically significant positive correlation of moderate strength. That means, in other words, the growth during the school year is correlated with student growth from year to year. So this growth that we saw wasn't just that maybe the students came back from the summer and their score was a little lower, then they came up in the winter. What it means is we've seen growth that they left at the end of the school year here, maybe they started here, but now they have grown past what they did the previous school year. And then, you know, our goal, of course, is to keep having more growth so that gap starts to close. Okay? So that's the end of this part of the pilot schools. Okay. So now a comparison, because we said in our evaluation plan that we were going to compare to another group, and that's where I had mentioned, we can keep rolling forward. That's why I mentioned that we, that I had to move that down from seven schools to six. And what you're seeing on this chart is where I was able to find a comparison classroom. And the reason why it's not in alphabetical order and it moves from one school on one side, starting with an E, to a school that ends, starts with a B on the other side, is because that was literally the schools that I kept looking at in that order, because first I thought, well, I'll, I'll do a match by socioeconomic status. I'll do a match by demographics. I kept trying to find ways to find a match and then thinking I would see a similar NCE. And that's the path that I had to take to find a match for every class. So we have quite a variety of schools that we are matched to to find a class NCE that is similar to the one in, in the pilot school. So all of those schools then made up first grade through fifth grade. Okay? And then when we look at the comparison schools, this is the view then of their growth or where they started in the fall and where they came to in the winter. And I have the change coming up in another slide, but just to show you that we did the same there. There was 2,056 students that had a match of a fall and a winter score. So we'll keep rolling forward. So in the six pilot schools, there was then 1,355 students because there was one school that we had to move out. And in the comparison school, there was 2,056. And that will be okay because we have such a large number, it will be okay that we were about 100 students different. It will be, it'll be fine in our information, so we can keep going. We had, as Dr. Shartier said, it was a great introduction to talk about equity. So it's important, since we have a variety in our comparison schools, to show you what is the race and ethnicity of our pilot schools and also for our comparison schools. And what we'll see there is that when it comes down to our demographics, we are looking at about, to make sure I have everything correct, 30% of our students in our pilot schools are white Caucasian and 70% it's a diverse breakdown. And then when we go to our next slide, we'll see that in our comparison schools, it's 40% white Caucasian to 60% of a more diverse background. Okay? So for just trying to go through and find that match, we're, we're close, but our comparison schools are not quite as diverse as our pilot schools. Okay, we'll keep going then. And then, you know, English language proficiency makes a difference. So in our pilot schools, the students set are levels one through five, and that's as measured by access for ELLs 2.0. And this data would have been the access level from last year, the, this year's access tests weren't in yet. That is 37.6% of the students at our pilot school and out of our comparison schools then, which would be the next slide, it's 32%. So relatively close. So just to kind of give you an idea of the background. Then looking at the change between the two schools, and you'll notice that for the kindergarten spot, that is still open because that, we're looking at Star Early Literacy. So on this table, we have the grade level on the far left. The fall and the winter for the pilot are the two next columns. The column, the first column that's shaded, that is the change that we had looked at before, but only this is for the six schools instead of the seven for the pilot schools. Then we have the two columns that are the fall and the winter for the comparison, and the far right then is the comparison group. So now you're able to see side by side the change and the growth over that six-month period, five, six?
Three.
Three months, pardon me. What we have in the growth. So in first grade, it's 6.52 to 4.24. Grade two, as I said, you know, it's, it's obvious that there's something we need to look in with grade two. The growth is 3.48. And in math expressions, which would be on the far right, it's eight NCE points. Grade three, 7.26 to 4.95. Grade four, 3.51 to 4.41. Or pardon me, that's grade four. Grade five is 3.76 to 4.49. And overall, for our pilot group, 4.906. And for our comparison group is 5.218. When you're doing a pilot, and before we had talked about wanting to, you know, we want to see that change, the first thing you do when you're hypothesis testing, and that's really what we are, is you assume that there's not going to be any change. That you would say, this intervention, the null hypothesis is, it's not going to have an impact. So what we can see from this is that in certain grade levels, there is an impact, and we have evidence to see that in some grade levels, it's more than our current. But what we can say, and we'll be looking at that in our observations, is that it is doing as good as our current set. And we've only covered three units. Okay? But we'll look at that at our observations. The next couple of slides are, are information that, in case you're looking at it and saying, well, even though you're using the normal curve equivalent, can you really be sure that there was a change in each of those groups that you could identify and you could see? And the next couple of slides using the t-test is saying, yes, it is significant, it really did occur, there really is a difference between the pre and the post. And we did that for the comparison and for the pilot group. We'll scoot down then to, as Dr. Shartier said, oops, and if we can just, there we go. As Dr. Shartier said, this equity was a great introduction for us. And this is kind of where we start looking at to see if everybody gets the bicycle that fits their size. What we're looking at in these first two slides, this is a box plot. And when we look at the box plot, you will see that we have that configured for, these are all the grade levels together. So all of the students that, that have a race or ethnicity of, for example, our Native American Indian students, our Asian students, our black or African American, Hispanic or Latino, two or more races, or our white Caucasian children. So what you see on the left is the fall NCE. And on the right, you see the winter. And when we're looking at the box plot, you can see in between, I put a blue line across there so you could see where the 50 NCE is. And then you can tell from the size of the box what is kind of that interquartile range. And that's where 50% of the people would be. And basically, what I want you to see is, as you went from fall to winter, how did growth occur for each of the groups? Okay? So that's what it looks like for the pilot group. We also did the same for our comparison group. Okay? And where you see that white space in there, that is because there was one, it was a small cell size, it was actually one student. So it's, that's why there's that extra space that looks a little large in there. Okay? So the same premise here that you can see between fall and winter, how did this, and this would be math expressions now in the comparison group, to see how is it moving from group to group, and some groups you see not moving at all, or very much. Within that blue box, look for that black line, because that's now the median, that's the score that's right in the middle, and look to see, did the whole box shift, did the box get smaller, and look to see if that line in the middle shifted. So what we'll do, though, is I'll take you down now to the slide that is a comparison, and we'll go actually to winter, we'll go to the next one. There we go, because this is kind of our end result. So what I want you to see is, in the winter, so what we see now is we have the pilot group on the left, and we have the comparison group on the right, and to look at, for each of our groups of students, to look and see, where did that box start, and where did that box end up? The orange lines are at a 30 and a 70 NCE, so that's the observable effect of one grade level, 50 is the entry to proficiency. And we begin to see, and this is about finding that bicycle, what is going to be that vehicle that we're going to be able to ride in order to get to that proficiency? That really drilling down and seeing, do we finally have a resource that allows everyone to succeed? Okay? And then, we can, so the overall observation of that part, there's evidence to support that the implementation of the first three units of the Bridges resource has resulted in similar, and at some grade levels, more growth in students, grades one through five, as measured by the class average NCE, normal curve equivalent score. There's evidence to support the Bridges resource is as effective in schools with diverse populations as the current resource of math expressions. Bridges resource cohort, evidence of positive change in the interquartile range for our Asian, Black or African American, and Latino students, fall to winter. There's evidence to support that more growth occurred in the Bridges pilot schools in grades one and three, as in the comparison group. There's evidence to support that more growth occurred in the comparison group in grade two than in the grade two pilot schools. So the overall, you know, if we went into this expecting not to see any difference, we are seeing differences, and we are seeing differences that we weren't able to see in some of our other groups of students. So that's been exciting to see, that we have some changes going on. And again, to move a whole group, you know, there's going to be some, like regrowth after that summer when we come back, but to have, to move a whole group, seven, eight, and nine NCE points is just, is phenomenal. Any questions at this point, before we go into our kindergarten data? Andrew?
Andrew?
Oops, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
You're fine?
Yep.
Okay. So there's islands where this is, where this is good, but then it was, the comparison group actually did much better in second grade, if I'm looking at this correctly. I guess I would have almost been, I would have, why so much, why so much difference? I know that one, there was one case where, you know, where a classroom was not a comparison group anymore, but I guess it's for what we heard about how much better the curriculum was, and I think that's, I think Bridges being superior to math expressions is backed up in the research. I'm not, I'm not quite, and I'm still optimistic, but I'm not quite sure why we really didn't see as much of it here. Like, we're not seeing a consistent improvement with Bridges, we're finding some subgroups, which is, which is good, but if Bridges was really truly superior, would it not move almost, not all, but almost everything just up?
Would you like to tell me what?
I would venture to say that the resource is one piece of the puzzle, the instructional practice is, and the implementation of it is another. You asked a very good question, when Gwen and I did our data analysis on this, we know this is what we're digging into now. Why is there such a significant difference in that second grade? We have to also keep in mind, this is just a three-month sample, so we, it could be for various reasons. It could be the background that the second grade students did not come to second grade with the background knowledge and skill development that was necessary to meet the second grade mathematical standards, and the rigor of those mathematical standards. So there's, you bring up a great point, and that's what we do know in the next part of this pilot. We're not concerned about it, because we know we're all learning, teachers are learning this very complex curriculum. If we do not see it over time, then that's where we bring in our training team.
I think, too, there's also the implementation gap of doing things in a very new and different way, that is, to have people not only get up to speed, but actually outperform in several different grade levels, as opposed to second grade, where it wasn't as good. To have that occur in a three-month period of time is demonstrating that there's very promising aspects to the work that we should consider. And again, looking at this compared with the, what we see in the other districts that we've studied that are using it, we believe that with more time, again, this was only three months of drastic change in practice, we'll see additional positive results.
And what's good is that we're able to detect it, we can identify it, so if there is a fidelity of implementation, if there is a need for resources, if there is whatever our coaches and our interventionists can see, it's wonderful that we're able to establish baseline and see that there's more that can be done.
I appreciate that. I mean, you could, I mean, not here, but not here and now, but other places now, or here a long, long time ago, one could have probably cherry picked reports, made it still plenty long, and shoved it out there, and just showed the roses, and probably, probably gotten away with it. So I'm, yeah, I'm good with this, because it's a well-researched change, and staff seems to be on board, but if we're not, you know, as we, as we go big, I mean, it's, you know, another possibility, probably not, but maybe, maybe it's not the right curriculum for Green Bay, I doubt it, but, I mean, I don't want to, one thing about Green Bay is we have a very, very long, you know, institutional memory, and I think sometimes a reluctance to admit that something didn't work and switch, switch course. And, you know, I think trying, trying the better curriculum, if we're convinced it's better, there's no shame in going back if it didn't work. It's not, you know, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Appreciate it, Jim.
Brenda?
Did you, this will be a bit of a mystery. I'd be interested, when you come back at the end of the school year, to see our special ed group, too, in this group, and also just the free and reduced lunch gap also. And I say that with also, I wanted to have you elaborate, there's a, this is in the memo or whatever, not the PowerPoint, the other document, and it's on page six, about special education, and it says that the special ed teachers are using weekly progress monitoring assessments, and then, so talk a little bit about how this meshes in with, with special ed.
So our special education department, actually, well, we have had Bridges intervention as our tier-two intervention in math, and our special education department, we went through this training and learned more about the power of this resource. It provides the continuum, and developmental continuum, the resource does, with upgrade level. And so, when we imagine that it's value-added intervention, as the child potentially could be pulled out for that intervention in Bridges, to come back into the classroom, the number corner component is exactly where the child could find his, find their place in a very meaningful way, with the same language, the same manipulatives. So they find their way from an intervention seamlessly into their classroom. And so, to that means, we're talking about three months of intervention, the interventionist, the pilot school interventionist, the educators behind me, and the math pilot schools, special education teachers, were all trained at the end of September in Bridges intervention. And then, we began almost like a sub-pilot to see, will this really, will this really be a carryover of growth, and, because we know we want our children in our classroom, but we want it to be a meaningful experience. And the equity to rigorous curriculum, yet very tightly scaffold, so that, again, we know the pathway to proficiency is through a rig, through this rigor, through equity to having exposure and be involved in a rigorous curriculum. So when we do come back, we definitely can provide for you, it wasn't part of the original pilot, but being, with that being said, we were using it in our math intervention already, and they approached us. And so, we worked with Claudia Hendrickson, and we then trained together, and I mentioned in my memo, the collaboration between the two, the seamlessness, the language, the academic language, it's pretty, it's very powerful, and we know that we have children that have made over years' growth in three months. And we have that data, we just didn't prepare for this presentation, this is on our very designed pilot, but we have a couple, we have just number corner schools going on, too, so we have some other pieces happening to see just how effective this, it's a comprehensive approach to teaching mathematics, it's seamless regardless.
Brenda?
I have questions about the professional development, but I don't think that's, you're not at that point yet, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, whatever.
It is, it is.
Whatever that can happen.
I'm sorry, we have.
I'll scoot to kindergarten, and then get you back on your way.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go forward.
If I may.
Yes.
Now, the pilots only, am I hearing you correctly, the pilots only went on this school year, started this school year, right? And I, I mean, to me, it's premature to make any sort of judgment yet on whether this is truly working. I think we could say, if we made a judgment, we could say it's not hurting, it's at least holding its own, and plus in some areas to the surrounding schools. So it seems to me, I'm assuming you're going to come back after the end of the school year, give us an update on all this, so that might be a better time to make some sort of judgment on whether juice is worth the squeeze, and extensive planning, and everything else going on.
We have.
I think we need to share the additional data, because I think you'll, there are some positive results, and I think that it would be important for you to give a summary of the kindergarten answers, and then move on to the survey.
Yeah, just the summary of that.
Exactly. Okay. So we'll just roll through, and this is information, if you have questions, we had 225 children in kindergarten, and looking at a domain score, a domain score goes from zero to 100, it's not the same as an NCE, but it, that's how early literacy works, and so in early literacy, there's a component called early numeracy. But the nice thing is, the domain score of 50 is a nice breakpoint, and what you're looking at here is just the distribution of how the scores went for those 225 students in the fall. Okay? So we'll keep rolling forward, and you can see there was a shift for the winter, and our goal is to have students 50 to 100. And it was nice to see that we had a shift to the right, and on the far right, you can see the numbers that were, we have over 204 students that are now 50 and above, which means developmentally, and that's how early numeracy would be, developmentally, they are where they should be at this time of year, because we have to remember that STAR is a formative assessment, and it keeps moving along to where you should be during the school year, it's not a benchmark assessment, it keeps pace where you should go. So we'll keep rolling forward. So Gwen? Mm-hmm, that's it. Twenty-one students.
Below 50, in that second slide.
Correct.
And how many in the first slide?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Yes. Okay. Exactly. And what we're seeing in this, this is the box plot, then again, of what it would look like, and the reason why we have an orange line at 25 is because this, the domain scores go from zero to 25 as being the first breakpoint, and you would want students not to be in that section. Twenty-five to 50, and 50 to 70, and, or 50 to 75, and 75 to 100. That's why you have the orange lines at 25 and about 75. 50 is still the middle point, and you kind of see the lay of the land there then, for where our interquartile ranges, and then we can scoot to the next one. Go roll forward then. Laurie, may I ask you to roll the slide forward, please? Thank you. There we go, thank you. And what you're seeing here is, I wanted to just show you the movement of how, so where you're seeing the red lines, that's where that blue box was before, and the dotted line was where the median score was, and that's how much has moved up, so that's 50% of the students moving. So when we saw that number going from 57 to 21 of the students that are lower, but yet everybody else who moved up, that's kind of the observable effect of what that is.
So that's pretty impressive growth.
Yes, that's nice, because that means we have that many more kindergarten students that will enter into first grade on track, so that's, that's wonderful. So now, and we can pinpoint our work of the 21 students yet that we need to move forward, so now teachers can continue to refine where they're going and looking at those groups of students. So we can move forward then. So thank you, Laurie, for moving that forward. Thanks. And this is just a breakdown, then, of the mean for each of the groups, and we can roll forward a couple more slides, because I bring those two panels together. Oops.
Do you need that page?
Yeah, I guess that was, that was the one that was the, the piece in between, but that's okay, that middle slide just showed the comparison between the two groups, which would be on all there, so you can keep going, and we'll get down to the observation to bring you together. And if you want any explanation on those other slides, I can take you through that, because that was, those other slides in between was just saying that, even though we're using a domain score, was it really true that there was a difference? And those other two slides were saying, yes, they were. So the observation then is that Starly Literacy, Early Numeracy, is a new assessment instrument for students, and we should allow a spring administration of the assessment before completing the analysis with the end-of-year data. We had students that were getting used to that tool, so we want to make sure that what we're seeing is, was really everything that's there. We'll build a comparison group with the end-of-year data, and we'll determine if the rate of growth was the same or different with our comparison group. As of winter 2018, there's evidence of positive movement, which we saw of students to an early numeracy domain score above 50, or 50-plus, and positive movement of early numeracy domain scores, and the cohort average early numeracy domain score in all race and ethnicity groups. And that was a slide that didn't show for us, but I know it's in your presentation. And that's that, any questions?
Okay, so that, as we switch, thank you so much, Dr. Shum. As we switch out to have additional folks come to the board, to talk about our staff survey is going to be next, I'd like, if you don't mind, preserve some time to answer a few of the questions. The question is, when are the other math interventionists going to be trained? The plan is not to have any additional math interventionists trained, but to look at teachers who have been in the classroom and successfully implemented Bridges. Your training central office, and they're not all ours, but the team that we work with from central office that are in the schools, you always want a balance of intervention and classroom teachers, because you never know who you have to support, and who will take on that learning in what way. So as we move forward, if there would be additional trainers needed, we would be tapping teachers that are living this experience now. In fact, even as part of our summer training, we'll be tapping a few of our teachers in the pilot, as, if this goes forward, that they actually will be, not, they're not trained, but they will be almost like the testimonial in what they did during the pilot as a teacher, from a teacher perspective. In a parallel, our literacy coaches are made up of both classroom teachers and literacy interventionists, and that brings balance and perspective when you're developing a professional team. Our math interventionists- Our math interventionists are already trained in Math Recovery, in Math Champion, that's intervention. The additional training they've received is the universal and how an actual balanced approach to teaching in a workshop model and instruction in a universal is much different because of the component of a lot of things, but mainly because of the classroom management. You're teaching 21 to 30, 28 kids, children at one time versus small group instruction where in Math Recovery, it's one-on-one. In AVMR, it's three, it's potentially three students. It's very much a different wall when we get into this very sophisticated part of teaching and learning.
How would you determine which interventionists were going to be doing this?
As the trainers? All of our interventionists were trained as Math Champions. They all provided professional development on AVMR training, were a training site, shall I say, in system.
No, I'm sorry, I mean the Bridges.
I'm going to get there. Because it was the same group of people that were in that group. We had a math teacher leader that worked exclusively with the population of math interventionists. The folks that, the professionals that are here tonight held a full-time math interventionist job for almost two years in the district and stepped forward and wanted to be a part of this Bridging Initiative. We also had the math interventionists here tonight, our professional trainers, also served on the selection committee and did the analysis of what resource we would even, resources we'd even think about bringing forward. So this has been all of a three-year project to get to this point. And so they were involved in analyzing, digging deeper into all of our different potential resources. And then as they stayed on with the team, we knew that we could potentially have trainers if this was adopted. Math Learning Center provided at no charge that particular service for us. Another consideration, whenever we're working with the adult learner, we look at the characteristics. Some of our math interventionists do not want to be coaches. And have actually gone through the training and determined they would rather remain working with students. So working with the adult learner is not always the desire of every employee. They were selected because they were in the process and a part of the process all the way through. Over time, when we add additional, my recommendation would be that we look at those that have implemented in the classroom so that we have teacher perspective of implementing and actually the actual working of this resource in the classroom as a classroom teacher.
So was this offered to all of them?
No, it was not. To be trained as a trainer? No, it was not.
So they weren't asked if they wanted to be part of the Bridges program?
They are interventionists. So no, we did not go to all of them and ask, do you want to be a part of the Bridges program? Their focus is strengthening. We have a math intervention program that we're trying to get underway in the district to focus just on the complexity of that. The math interventionists are highly trained, and that's a very specific and very high-skilled position. To be able to go in between each, you would have to be willing to give up your own personal time to move forward to do that. For the, we have a math teacher leader that did that intimate work with our math interventionists when they were one whole group. They're still math interventionists, so they're still part of the group. The math interventionists in all the schools will still partake in the training. They just, we can't just get everyone trained as a trainer because then you, it's difficult to keep everyone on the same page to ensure that we're implementing with fidelity.
And how many do you have in the district interventionists total?
I want to say math interventionists, I want to say 17. And we're down to less, in fact, we have curriculum coordinators that went through the training along with myself this summer because we didn't want to deplete our interventionists. There aren't very many to begin with. They're halftime at all of the schools. We didn't, we did not want to deplete that population. So we knew we'd take a percentage. We also then have our two math interventionists, I'm sorry, our two curriculum coordinators that took on additional duties to be trained. And we got trained together. We tried to make a team of 10, and we're down to seven already because of even those that went through the training, found that going through this, they, they really don't prefer to work with the adult learner.
Okay. I have one question about that. If there were others out there that wanted to be trained to work with the adult learner, would you be open to that?
Would I be? Absolutely. But there is criteria in screening process that we go through for our coaching and working with the adult learner. And then they definitely, we would, when we open it, we would, absolutely. Oh, yes. We'd take anyone that would want to take on this level of work. But again, if we have our preference, we now are building a system. And we need to balance the system with both intervention and not deplete our specialists in intervention with the teachers who refine this practice in the classroom. Very different, but every school has a different need. So when we're working in Green Bay, we have to make sure we have multiple skill sets, and everyone has their strength. And we have to have a pool of trainers that best meets the school's individual needs.
One more question, I'm sorry. So if you, if this is actually more, if there's more time that has been spent, and then you come back with more results, and it looks to be truly successful, and it's something that's working well, do you anticipate being able to train more interventionists for that purpose?
For that purpose? It would be neglectful for me to bring that proposal to you until we see what we can do with a training team. So we have what we believe enough to go to full implementation next year with the training team, the way it's designed and the way I presented it in my board memo, and the profession, multi-levels of, just levels of professional development. Would we additionally need more? We may. Would there be opportunity for interventionists who are currently interventionists to be trained as a Bridges trainer? Absolutely. Again, and we started with 10, and we're to seven.
Okay.
And I would say as well that our current intervention system doesn't meet, can't meet the needs of every learner at this point. There are so many students that need intervention to build them up to proficiency. We are serving the students with the greatest need, and we're closing gap with them. And we're doing other things with differentiation for the, for the students that are, that are not able to access those interventions. But really, that's, that's part of what this is about, is how can we make sure that regular instruction is better so that fewer kids are falling through the cracks and needing the intervention? So really, this is an opportunity for us to do deeper preventative care so that kids don't end up in a state where they're, they're needing deep intervention. So my hope is that over time, we'll have a decreasing need for intervention because so many kids will be doing better with Bridges.
Any other questions? Was that, did I answer your question?
Thank you.
You bet. So I think we're ready now. When we switch, I'll sneak in another answer or another question you had. Okay, go ahead, Emily.
I'm Emily Thomas. I'm the math interventionist at Dan's Elementary and part of the Bridges training team.
I'm Catherine Schiller. I'm a math interventionist at King Elementary and Kennedy Elementary. I'm also part of the Bridges training team. So I know that a lot of these results have been shared with you in the board memo, so we'll kind of, you know, concise it down a little bit as far as our timing goes as well. The training team came up with seven questions that were released to staff as far as a staff survey as a way to ensure that we are hitting all teachers and their needs during this pilot program. We had about 100 participants that responded out of the pilot schools. This also includes some special education teachers because they were using the Bridges intervention and kind of wanted to voice their opinions regarding Bridges. For this particular question, it looks at the resource and how it promotes the success of all students, and if teachers felt that the resource had adequate strategies and materials to ensure that all students were learning. And we had about 87% of teachers, or 87 teachers, that stated that they did feel that the resource promotes the success of all students. Some of the comments that were made, they stated that Bridges is very hands-on, it's engaging, the support materials and the visual aids that are there are wonderful for that student development. It provides the students different opportunities and strategies to learn. We know that not all students learn the same way, so having those multiple avenues that we've spoken about this evening, Bridges really allows for that student, student strategy and choice to really come about. The workplaces provide differentiation to meet all levels in the classroom. They're finding that it's easy to differentiate based on what Bridges provides in the lesson structure. Teachers are seeing overall growth from pre-assessment to post-assessment throughout the units. And teachers are also seeing that transfer coming from either a tier-two math intervention or a special education classroom back into universal because the language is similar, the models are similar, and that transfer is now occurring. 12% of teachers stated some concerns that they had. They would like to have more ways to differentiate some of the lessons and workplaces. They also would like more materials for larger class sizes. So the things that come with Bridges, such as spinners and frames and DEXO cards, they wish they had more so that more students could have access to those materials. They also thought that having some of the necessary but not included items, as Bridges states, also available. But that's also being looked at in our budget proposal. So those would be paperclips and post-it notes, things that Bridges assume that you have in the classroom. Some points to consider after looking at this data is, Bridges does offer a lot of ways to differentiate, but being that it's our first year really diving into it, and it is a more in-depth resource, we didn't want to overwhelm our teachers. So looking ahead now for the rest of the year, that's something that trainers are going to be diving more into. How can we differentiate? How can we use our assessment maps and our scope and sequence to really dive deeper into that?
Quick follow-up question. You mentioned when you started the slide that some of the, some of the teachers were special education teachers. I don't know if there are ELL teachers, you know, other teachers in there as well. My question is, did you discern, was there any disaggregation around? So, so it wasn't 12% of the staff that didn't think there was enough differentiation? Did they teach a certain student group, is my wonderment? In other words, if I answered no, was it because of the students I had in front of me, which might be different than mainstream students? I don't know that. I'm just wondering if that would matter, how I answered that question.
This data just spaced, is basically the whole combined group. So either the universal, the classroom teachers, and the special education teachers. Nancy would have more information.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do have the database.
Okay.
I didn't release it to anyone else.
That's fine.
It's private. But what we can do is we can go through and segregate and pull the, rerun the data with separating the special education.
I'd just be curious if it mattered.
Absolutely, we can certainly do that.
Because you might get a different response, that's all. Thank you.
And keep in mind that 99, the total survey, 99 participants took the survey. So it's.
That's a good.
It's a nice sample, yes.
All right, our second question asked teachers if they found the resource to give their students opportunities to engage in tasks that promote reasoning and problem solving. So 93% of the teachers that responded said that yes, there are opportunities for reasoning and problem solving. So some of the things the teachers said was that this resource gives students more opportunities and support to practice that deeper thinking by explaining their thinking and their strategies, and their challenge to find multiple ways to solve problems. So not only are they thinking about their own thinking and strategies, but they're also reasoning with multiple perspectives. They're given opportunities to think independently, to work in small groups, and to work whole group in that reasoning and problem solving. They also said that there's many materials that help students build their conceptual understandings while they reason and problem solve. So instead of just learning a procedure, as maybe we have in the past, students really get a chance to work with materials and develop their own understandings. Teachers also noted that students are more engaged in this type of instruction because they're building their own understanding. And they also noted that it's a lot easier to identify gaps that students have because you're listening to student thinking. So you can see what gaps they might have in their learning as you're observing and listening to them explain their reasoning. So 7% of the teachers said that they had concerns in this area. And most of those came down to students in the upper grades lacking background that would have been built if they had Bridges in previous years. So they don't, they haven't necessarily had the experiences that helped them build some of those skills that our, our students in the lower grades are currently building. So tasks where they engage in problem solving and reasoning can be difficult for our lower students. We, going into adopting or piloting Bridges, we knew that it would be a more rigorous curriculum because of the way that it approaches the instruction. So we knew that it would be a higher level of demand for our students. So we anticipated some possible struggles in those upper grades as well.
Our third question looked at if the resource gives students the opportunity to construct their own understanding of mathematical concepts. We had 93% of our teachers that view that this does provide them the opportunity to construct those understanding. Bridges allows for a lot of open-ended, open-ended problem-solving tasks. So it's not just, as we said before, kind of a sit-and-get, but they're given a task, they're able to use manipulatives, come up with their own understanding, and then able to share out. So there's a lot of discourse occurring. And everyone has their chance to find their own understanding in a different way. The workplaces allow students to use different tools and different manipulatives to help them arrive at their answer. Or if they get stuck, they know where to go to allow them to be successful within that task. There's a lot of scaffolding, and it provides a lot of strong, it provides a strong foundation for student learning in the future. They're encouraged to self-discover, which aligns really nicely to AVMR. I know that we've talked about that earlier. So we're really seeing these pieces now starting to fit together. There's plenty of classroom discourse around the strategies, and it's becoming a motivational tool for a lot of our students because they not only want to find just that one way, but now they want to find two or three ways and kind of, to some extent, have almost like a competition with their peers. So we're finding this resource to be a great benefit for that motivational aspect. We had some students, some teachers that were concerned, 7% of them. They wish that we had more teacher choice as far as workplaces go to really kind of fill in some of those gaps that we're still seeing. And the increase in rigor that Emily was just talking about, students maybe not being as prepared as they are in the intermediate grades because of some of that lack of background knowledge that they haven't been able to experience in the first grade, second grade classrooms. Some things to consider about this, that each student does have their own workplace, and we've talked about this earlier. And there is an opportunity for that independent practice. But like we've stated before, that's a whole nother layer of professional development that we look at providing for our teachers. What else can we do? How can we use our AVMR data and our Bridges data and kind of come up with some common ground for our students? This will be kind of a focus moving forward this year and in future years if Bridges becomes an adopted resource.
The next question asked teachers if the assessments give adequate information about student learning. And 84% of teachers said that yes, the assessments give adequate information. As has been talked about a little bit before, there's a pre and a post-assessment for all the units in grades two through five. And those assessments look very similar. They just have different numbers in the questions. So teachers can use those to see exactly what has been mastered and what areas might need some more learning around in upcoming units. So teachers, a lot of teachers noted that they really appreciated having those, and it was helpful to fill out their growth report cards as well because they can see exactly how much growth was made within a unit. And all of those assessments also have scoring sheets that come along with them, and it all relates to Common Core. So again, that really helps them see how students are growing toward their standards that they need to master throughout the year. There's also formative assessments, which are called checkpoints. And those were listed often as being helpful to monitor student progress throughout the unit. So they have their beginning and their post-assessments, but then they also have some checkpoints along the way to see how they're doing. Teachers said that the assessments align really well with what's in the unit, and they give an accurate picture of how students took on the content during the unit. They said that the scoring guides were very helpful. They said that the scoring guides helped them differentiate their lessons as well because, again, they could pinpoint exactly what students needed to continue their learning. And then we also had a comment from special ed teachers who have had the opportunity to use that Bridges intervention. And they said that it's extremely helpful to use the weekly progress monitoring that's included in the Bridges intervention to see, again, exactly what students have mastered and what they might need within that next week of lessons. So then we had 16% of teachers that addressed some concerns in this area. One being that pre-assessments are difficult for students because they really don't know a lot that's on those, again, especially in our upper grades. And that can be frustrating for some of our students. Some teachers said that recording data on the spreadsheets from Bridges can be time-consuming. Some teachers said that recording data on the spreadsheets from Bridges can be time-consuming. It's very broken down within the questions. So there's a lot of different components to it. So that, at times, can be time-consuming. Some teachers felt it was difficult to give students a mark on the growth report card because the language varies between what we have on the report card and what they're assessing through the scoring guides. They also pointed out that while the assessments, they give us a lot of information on our average and high students, when a student doesn't perform well, it's hard to get a lot of information from those assessments. They also pointed out that they need some more support on using assessment data to make decisions about their instruction. And at some times, we're frustrated that there are questions on the assessment that weren't addressed in the units. And so when students were taking the assessment, it was something that, the question may be on something that wasn't covered in the unit. So just a consideration with that is that's in there on purpose to see if students can extend their learning and how they'll do with learning that might happen in future units. So for example, on a multiplication and division, or multiplication assessment, there might be a question at the end about division to see if they can start to apply some of their multiplicative thinking to that division and see just some future on what they might be able to do. As Catherine stated, we haven't done a lot of professional development in how to use assessment data to move instruction as we've really focused on just getting our instruction ready, being well-planned and ready to go for what we're doing right now. And that's something that we'll definitely look at growing in the future as teachers can take on more.
Just to clarify here, and overall, I'm happy with the, overall, I'm pretty happy with the staff survey. But when you say, do you feel the assessments give you adequate information regarding student learning? No? That doesn't mean that 16.2% have some concerns, unless I misheard you. It means the 19.2% have some concerns and 16% say that it's terrible in this regard. Now, I still like the overall thing. I just don't like to sugar, I don't like to get into problems with sugarcoating a no into a had concerns and then a maybe turns into a yes. And we've had this before. So I'm still happy with the 84% with decent comfort level here. So, thank you.
Yeah, when we looked through survey results, we just really put them into categories of concern or not concern, or, you know, positive versus something that we might be concerned about. So there may be some comments from that yes, but more information would be helpful when we're stating concern. So yeah, it might overlap a little bit.
And I would also say that there isn't necessarily a deep love of assessment in general. And so if you asked people in general, do you feel that STAR assessment or another assessment gives you adequate information regarding student learning? It would be interesting to see how a comparative of this assessment question compares to others. Not that we've done that, but I'm just thinking that there might be a sense in general that people are kind of not always seeing assessment as giving the adequate valuable information about student learning that we hope to as we build that capacity over time. I think that answer on all assessment will hopefully change, but we'll also be better at using the data once we have it.
And this is all new. Many of our teachers at this time have not even gotten into the heart of the assessment. In fact, Brittany and Lindsay will talk about what's truly in a Bridges assessment. It's far more complex than you give an assessment, you measure what you've taught. There are three different principles being taught through each one of these more complex assessments. So, okay.
So the last three questions that were asked were more open-ended questions. So just looking for comments, feedback, anything that they could share. So the first question is, how do you feel Bridges compares to math expressions? Teachers stated that it's more hands-on, more rigorous, more engaging for students. It allows for more variety of strategies and discussion within the classroom. So it's not just the teacher doing all the talking. It's more student-led and student-centered. It also allows for more of that self-exploration and student thinking. Math expressions was a little bit more clear and direct with the teaching versus now that the students are kind of taking on their own learning, sometimes it does get a little bit muddy and it's not as clear. But through that, they come to a deeper understanding conceptually. Bridges allows for a math workshop to occur and then aligns with the AVMR focus and practice that we've been working on for the last few years. It's more appropriate for our young learners. Teachers spoke about number corner and how amazing that is, something that we typically would do in a classroom setting at the elementary level with our calendar work and our morning work in the beginning of the day. We can now apply some mathematical concepts, and students are feeling successful regardless of where they are, grade level-wise. Teachers did value using workbooks for math expressions. This year for the pilot program, we opted to print the pages in-house at our print center and then sent it out and teachers could bind it. They could put it in a binder for the students. In our proposal, we did, we listened to that and we are looking to order and purchase workbooks for upcoming potential years. Math expressions does require less preparation compared to Bridges. Bridges, you do have to kind of dig into it. You have to read the introduction, look at where you're going with it. What visuals and models are we going to be introducing? So there's a little bit more preparation with Bridges if you're looking at both of the resources.
All right, the next question was if there were any helpful hints or advice for teachers as they begin using the resource. So a lot of that came down to being organized. There's lots of materials that teachers receive. They get four boxes of materials, so there's lots for them to keep organized. So they suggested using systems to store your materials, make reusable materials whenever possible, and to plan ahead to have those materials ready. They also said, as Catherine said, to read the introductions before teaching the unit in advance as often as possible so that you know what's coming up and be ready to use your prep time to read and get ready because there's a lot to learn in that first year. And then also, a teacher, one teacher suggested being patient with yourself as the teacher as you take on the new resource. And also stated that after a couple months using the resource, he or she felt a lot more comfortable with the resource and fell into a rhythm with their instruction. And then we just asked for other comments that teachers had about using Bridges as a resource. And again, it was brought up that the resource is very time-consuming to use in order to be prepared to teach. It was also stated that students are engaged and excited about math. Even struggling students are able to attempt difficult tasks without getting too frustrated. And then it was also brought up a couple times that it was really great to have an intervention for special education to use as well.
Are there any questions?
Teachers that were surveyed, they asked for more strategies and materials. How do you plan to satisfy that request?
At the beginning, go ahead. Do you want to address the fact that it was a slow rollout because of the complexity of the curriculum? They intentionally let the trainers talk about, because they're their students. And they adapted and adjusted to the teachers they were taking on new learning. And so when we get feedback like this from teachers, then we know we can unveil more and give more, and they're ready to take on more. But if we would have opened the gate, it was already very complex. This is second-order change. So this curriculum supports second-order change, which means we are not just implementing a resource. We are implementing a resource that has demands on changing the way we teach. And if we look at our pre-existing data, if we don't do this, we really need to do something. This is the, and I'm not making my pitch because you'll get my recommendation in three minutes, but that's why when we have trainers that are working with the adult learner, we want to make sure we have them engaged and wanting to take on more. Support them through, give them time to learn this new learning. But if it's done correctly, when they, like they had mentioned, after three months and they got in a rhythm, they'll tell you it's hard. They'll also tell you we need it, that the results from our children are absolutely unbelievable. And I don't really know at this point that they fully have a deep enough concept of what it is that they're doing, but they're following the curriculum and the children are responding. It's the next year when they really get into that implementation, and they've had that year to really go through this complex resource. That they'll just, it takes two years to do this and to do it right.
So there will be more strategies and more materials coming?
Oh goodness, yes. Oh, there's, yes.
We also have a very high number of principals that are clamoring for this. There's a high demand for it. We've had a number of people ask if they, when they can get the materials. I think in general, Ellen and Natalie could speak to that as well. I also think that there's a sense of urgency that our building leaders have around making sure that we're able to close gaps and the data that this is showing. But the, more so the positive experience that teachers are having overwhelmingly with seeing student success and that success coming through high levels of engagement is really important. That's why it's working with special ed students. That's why it's working with ELL students. That's why it's working with students from diversity, is it's just really engaging instruction. If you're there in the classroom, and Laura, you saw it as well and I know others, but it's deeply engaging. If I had been a student in Bridges, I think I would have been far more interested in math than I was. And I think that it would have been a more productive experience as we're seeing with our students now. So, thank you.
I know we're running way over.
We're way over. No, we're good.
Can they get at least two minutes?
Yes. I appreciate it.
Just the height.
We have to make it relatively quick.
Hey, they're good.
We don't have cookies, but we're the last ones.
We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, you guys.
I'm Lindsay Repmister. I'm a full-time bilingual interventionist at Fort Howard.
And I'm Brittany Veronica again, Bethan Richmondus at Nigale.
All right. All right, so Brittany and I are going to speak to the different assessment opportunities that both Bridges and Number Corner offer and how they'll help our teachers make instructional moves supporting, guiding, and challenging all learners in the classroom. We pulled this quote from the Common Core State Standards. And we believe, and I'm sure you guys have noticed, that it matches really nicely with our district mission statement as well as embodies the design of Bridges as a math resource. The major clusters in mathematics are taught slowly and meaningfully throughout multiple units and monthly Number Corner workouts to ensure deeper understanding and application of those concepts. All right. All right, so this slide contains an overview of the different assessment types that are, the opportunities included within the resource. The first thing you may notice is that kindergarten materials have no formal unit assessments. And I kind of want to speak to that and how it embodies what we've been doing with AVMR so far. As you become familiar with kindergarten and first grade Common Core standards in math, it's evident that many are performance-based and require interview-style assessment, which is developmentally appropriate for students of that age. Something that matches the pedagogy and style of assessment our teachers have embraced with AVMR for the past five years. Research shows that students at that age develop verbal strategies before they are able to demonstrate their understanding with symbolic or written tasks. So the focus in the beginning of kindergarten is to work heavily with verbal or interview-based assessment. By the time they leave first grade, they're doing more paper and pencil-type assessments. That would be what you're seeing for second through fifth grade and the pre- and post-assessment, or unit assessments that they are taking. For the purpose of the pilot, our second through fifth grade teachers reported out on that data of their pre- and post-unit assessments. A snapshot of that was provided to you in the board report that was provided by Dr. Shartier last week. In the future, we plan to monitor the use of these assessments and how we can continuously improve our use of them as both formative and summative data points for making instructional decisions in our classroom.
All right, so Bridges assessments, the skills and concepts that involve the higher levels of cognitive demand do require more time to develop than others. So because of that, the majority of the K-5 standards, the major clusters, aren't actually expected to be mastered until the later half of the school year. An example of this would be in first grade. First graders need to add and subtract within 20. This standard is instructed and assessed in four different units and two Number Corner months before it's even expected to be mastered at the end of unit six. So that idea of teaching slow but deeper and then assessing small little chunks throughout to see if they're on target to meeting that standard versus at the end of each unit, they should have mastered each standard. This, again, aligns with our AVMR progressions for developmental understanding, AVMR teaching practices, and AVMR strategies. Teachers also got to utilize the color-coded spreadsheets. We use Google Spreadsheets, and the color codes go right along with every single grade level standard. And it tells you which students are on track to meeting that standard, which students need to support. In addition to these color-coded spreadsheets, there were assessment maps, which was talked about a little bit earlier. So here's an example of a second-grade assessment map, one of the pages. And so what it is, is it's the Common Core standards on the left. And then it shows you all the times that that standard is hit throughout the units and Number Corner. Where you see the blue highlight, that's where the standard is expected to be mastered. So each standard has multiple chances for students to build that understanding slowly throughout the units and Number Corner before they're expected to master it, typically later in the school year. And again, this coupled with those color-coded spreadsheets really allows good collaboration between grade-level teachers on which standards are being met by the students, which ones are on track to meeting. And then that idea of reteaching and collaboration is really powerful.
Any questions about the Bridges assessments? That would be the pre- and post that we used as part of the pilot. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you so much.
So that brings us to our recommendation. And at this time, our team believes that we have the information that we need to know that what Bridges can bring to the district will be a positive for both our instructional practices in mathematics and also our student achievement. So at this time, we are recommending that Bridges in mathematics be adopted as the elementary mathematics curriculum. It is also recommended that we have our seven math champions, Bridges trainers, positions be restructured for next year where they would be a halftime math interventionist, halftime trainer. So they wouldn't, they would not have both intervention all day long and then provide training outside of a full-time job, which they were doing this year. So at this time, that is our recommendation to the board. We have, at this time, $763,008 remaining in the elementary mathematics budget, which is still approved in our budget for this year to buy the remaining resources for the classrooms, the Bridges intervention resources, and the professional learning additional time that would be required in June. In order for this to work, we would have to, that's one thing the teachers have asked. Can we get the resources as soon as possible so that we can dig in and work through the resources? And of course, we have videotapes of unpacking it and so on and so forth. And then we prepare them for the summer for their two-day training so that they're prepared when they go to the classroom. The, so that is the remaining budget in mathematics for this year at the elementary level. Moving into next year, we'd be looking at, we are purchasing student workbooks. And again, we'd like to thank Jake Imperment, like Mike was saying. We, at one time, in Bridges, in Math Expressions, spent $250,000 a year in workbooks. He outsourced our student workbooks, very high quality, $70,000. We can duplicate the Bridges math workbooks, all three points, workbooks, including the parent connection. Also, the educator site licenses would give all our ESL teachers and our gifted and talented teachers, anyone who does not have a classroom, would have all of the exposure to all of and access to all of the grade-level resources used in the classroom, as well as all the educator blogs and training tapes and so on and so forth, so they can work collaboratively right with their team, right on their school team. Also, the additional professional learning time. As I had mentioned before, this is 30 additional hours for each employee, including those employees who are in our current pilot. This gives us time to go deeper and to really allow for our teachers that if they need additional time, that we can ensure that we have the funds to pay them at 2525. Also, that also includes in my memo, I outlined a professional development plan. We will be bringing grade-level teams together so all alike first-grade teachers would come together and we'll work with them because they have alike concerns or needs.
And I think it's important to recognize, because you had questions around the level of preparation that it will take. of preparation that it will take, that we are building in a considerable amount of time for that professional development to make sure that teachers are well-supported, given the great degree of change that'll take place.
So that universal, the professional learning contract services are Bridges trainers, like all of our trainers that work with our adult learners in the district, we continually build their professional development. So we would contract with the math council at approximately, I'm assuming that would be much less than $7,000 so that the trainers, then after their first implementation year, they go through another level of training as a trainer. And then the universal mathematics support of $291,000 would be Title I and Title II A money. That would be the other half of the math, the trainers' job description. So their intervention would remain as is, but we would, the second half of their job would be paid for out of Title II and Title I monies. Any questions on the budget? All of these recommendations of, this is what we listened to and what the teachers' concerns were in the surveys, to ensure that if we move forward, we had to make sure that we had these pieces. And so the governance request, we're requesting the Board of Education to approve the adoption of Bridges in mathematics resource corresponding budgets as outlined. Any additional questions? And I apologize for the length of time.
Thank you for the great deal of preparation.
One is, so we will be losing 3.5 FTE of interventionist time?
We will be backfilling that. So we will be posting two math intervention positions in which we train our own because we're a math recovery training site. So we will post those two positions.
So you're looking for an increase of 2.0 FTE for next school year? Help me follow that.
Three. It would be the, it would just be the math trainer component. So actually, one of our trainers has determined they want to stay with children. So we're looking at an increase of three FTE.
And that would be using Title I and Title II A funding?
Right.
So it would not be too much.
I know where, some of our math interventionists were full-time at one school. So they were a full-time math interventionist at our title schools. They had the .5 district paid, but they used Title I money to be a full-time interventionist. So we don't have to backfill that second intervention part. That would be at the trainer part that we'd be picking up Title I money.
Hey, let me go back again.
Okay.
What I'm seeing here, it would be 3.5 FTE less interventionist. Buy that seven, when you said make the people halftime interventionist, halftime trainer. Is that correct? Looking at that page? Your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. So then I heard you say, well, we're going to backfill with two positions to what?
We'll need, I'm sorry, we'll need four sections of intervention so that every school, we have four sites that their interventionist will not be a trainer. In other words, the two individuals that were just here, they were at a school just themselves, full-time at one site. We will not have to backfill that second part of that intervention because they will already do a part of their intervention. The backfill part would be the Bridges trainer part, that we won't be using the school Title I money, but we'll be using the district set aside.
Okay. You have to bear with me to track on this, okay? At the school where they are, where they're now, they're, right now, they're currently a full-time interventionist plus doing the training on the side. Is that right?
Correct.
I'm hearing you correctly. Now, next year, they're going to be half and half at the same school. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but in the other intervention positions, they are in halftime interventionists, like some of our interventionists are halftime at one school and halftime intervention at another school. So they have right now two intervention, their whole job is two intervention. They provide intervention. They don't have, this is where it's confusing. They don't necessarily do intervention all day long. When they were at, like if they were at Nicolay, they also provided their professional development at that pilot school, but we don't have to backfill that. So their job really stays as is, it's just a funding change. So if I'm at Nicolay, let's say that I'm at Jefferson.
Just stay with one position so I can track it, okay?
Yeah.
Stay with the Nicolay position.
All right. The Nicolay position is a full-time, there's actually 1.5 math intervention at Nicolay. There's another practitioner that would go to Nicolay. Brittany's position, she is one FTE, but half of it is paid for, the whole position's paid for out of title, in fact, in her particular position. So half of her position, she does do intervention. She has groups of intervention. But then the other part of her position, she did take small groups, but a lot of her work also was working with the support of Nicolay's implementation. Now Brittany, their job might be a little different because the other half of their job is paid for out of Title I.
Okay, let's ignore where the money comes from for a minute. I just want to know what they're doing.
Pardon me?
Forget the money for a little bit. I just want to know what they're doing. What changes are made and what she's going to be doing from this year to next year?
She will be supporting multiple schools, not just Nicolay. So if I was at Nicolay as an interventionist?
So something, what's being lost at Nicolay that she was doing there and that half that's being taken away?
That is correct. So at Nicolay, she would not be just solely supporting Nicolay like she is in the pilot. They, each of the math trainers will have four to five different schools that they will support as part of their time.
I'm sorry, we're talking past each other, I think. I'm going to try one more time. If not, we'll get together afterwards. I don't want to keep everybody here. She's there full-time and now she's, next year she'll only be there halftime because the other half she's going to be a little bit there plus at another school. So what's happening to that piece of her at Nicolay that won't be there, that part of that halftime? How is that getting filled in?
She's also the trainer at Nicolay. So, but she won't be there as much. So every, one of the pilot schools trainers stays in their second-year implementation as their trainer is part of it.
You're backfilling.
But I'm backfilling.
So we are hiring?
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'm Lisa Bynum, Associate Director of ESSA, and I work with Nancy on the Title I funding. Title I funding fluctuates each year due to student counts. So some years, some schools get a little bit more Title I funding and some years they get a little bit less depending on how many poverty students they have. There are three schools that due to decreasing Title I funding for next year, needed to cut back on math intervention. So they were using Title I funding to supplement the math interventionists that the district funding is providing. So every school gets a .5 FTE district-funded math interventionist. An example is Beaumont was using Title I funds this current school year to supplement that with a .5 math interventionist. Next year, they don't have enough funding to keep that position. That's true for three schools, Eisenhower, Beaumont, and Danes. So that's 1.5 FTE of math interventionist that won't be needed for next year. So those, that's 1.5 FTE that Nancy won't need to backfill.
And that's one scenario.
Let's go back and clarify that. It's 1.5 that aren't needed or 1.5 that we don't have the title money coming in for?
That we don't have the funding for. That we don't have the Title I funding for.
So the need's still there.
Yes.
Correct.
But will you be requesting, or have you, with district money to cover that? To keep those positions or is that premature to say?
In a sense, we are providing, like in Beaumont's case, they have, they'll have a .5 district math interventionist. But we'll also be assigning a trainer to work with that school. That is going to be funded by the district, although it's funded by district Title I money and that's where it gets a little confusing. So it's not Fund 10. It would be Title I or Title II. But Beaumont will still get additional math support outside of their .5 interventionist because every school will have a percentage of a trainer that they will flex and work with, every school. So they all have a trainer like in the pilot.
So are you telling me with the trainers, they're going to be training plus when they have, lack of better term, free time, bad term? I don't know what else to use. They would be acting as an interventionist?
Yeah, half of their.
Their time would be split.
Correct. Half of their job would be still at their school as a halftime interventionist.
With assigned time as intervention time and assigned time for coaching. So it wouldn't be as though they're going to be robbing their intervention students of time. We would make sure that that was still allocated in the way that would be equal to their 50% position that they were serving as an interventionist.
Yes. In fact, they requested, they still, thank you Lisa, you can stay here. You can just stay here. They actually requested to remain interventionist part of their job and training schools, the other part of their job. That was their request. Or we could have considered looking at three or four of them moving forward just as trainers. But every one of them wanted to remain working with children, which is win-win.
They liken, want to continue working with kids, so we want to make sure that that time is preserved carefully. But because of their high level of expertise, we want to make sure that that expertise is shared as a trainer as well while we have other people trained in for the intervention.
Exactly.
So the proposed budget numbers that you're giving us, if we go district-wide with Bridges, afford the schools who will just be starting next school year, the same level of training and intervention that the pilot schools have had?
Yes.
They're all saying yes back there, too.
Okay.
Seeing a lot of smiling nods.
It's, the way we fund our intervention system is, I can understand why it's a little confusing. But it's maximum, it's the way we maximize the use of our titles dollars and our federal grant monies to support our universal design. That's the way it's supposed to be done, but it is confusing to explain. So the only increase that we'd be asking for at this time would be to use Title II A, Title I money for three FTEs for trainers. That's it. We don't need the other .5 anymore because they chose to stay in intervention. The other positions, the money's already there to backfill. So that's all we're asking for, the increase of the three FTEs for the trainer parts of their jobs.
And I think we could put together a comparative chart if that would be helpful.
Sure.
I think seeing it on paper in many ways would be easier to visualize, at least in my mind at this point. Without more coffee. But, go ahead.
Rhonda. And there's no way you can move forward with this without the money?
That is correct. And in fact, that is, and I apologize again for the time, but it's also the timing of the year that we're getting now to the end of the year. We're getting a little nervous about not spending our money early enough. And if we don't move forward with this, we will be set back an entire, we will be doing nothing but a second-year pilot with what we're doing. What we're doing right now is what we'll have because we have the resources. So you're correct. Unless we have the money, permission to spend what's already been approved in the 1718 budget, in that to spend the money that's in the already budget for this project. And then going into next year, we'll be requesting that amount for the professional development and the workbooks.
So this would not be additional money for our department?
No.
It would be money that, so the $763,000 has been set aside already with the intention of buying math resources. And we would be building this in as one of our, basically our big-ticket elementary item for next year would be built into what we already forecast as our budget. So there wouldn't be an ask of additional money from the board other than allowing us to make use of these resources as we see will best fit the needs of our students. And again, we wanted to make sure that this was something that our principals and our teachers and our coaches all felt was the best course of action and that it was something that we could do. Because we don't want to set anybody up for failure without being fully prepared and that's why we built in significant funding to make sure that there was preparation time and also significant funding out of already allocated Title I time and Title II time to make sure that those highly-trained experts were there at the ready to train our elementary students. Again, this is most likely, this is, if there's one thing that's going to change the trajectory of our students at elementary, it's this. And I really, I know that this is a big ask and it's based partly on hope and preliminary data, but it's also based on seeing a fantastic track record of this in a number of other districts. And we really do have the data that's showing that it's closing gap. And even though it's really hard work, we're also seeing from teachers that in most cases, 90% of them really like it and want to move forward as well, even though it's really, really hard.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I don't expect an answer right now, okay? I'm looking at page 15 of Glenn's report and prior to next week, somebody can maybe help me understand why looking at that, I should feel comfortable that there's such a great improvement by going to Bridges.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll send that to all of us?
The whole group.
Thank you. That is another question. Any other questions or comments before we?
All right.
Yes.
I just, I look out at such extraordinary people in the trenches and I have great respect and regard for the work you're doing. It's heavy lifting. But I also know you don't come to the table with that much passion and stay till 9:30 at night if you didn't believe it. And I also know that we've been fortunate enough to see that we need to transform this. And I truly believe that this is pushing on a lot of places. And I've watched teachers, you know, even the conversations, I remember meeting with a group of teachers early in the fall and they're like, whoa, you know, hang on, here we go. But by now, it's a very different story. And I would expect, and I've had this conversation with Nancy and with John, we cannot move forward till we have the resources and horses to help pull this because what you can't do is push without having everyone moving together and move it. And that's a really critical part of this discussion. But when we talk about coherence and we talk about closing achievement gaps, we have to recognize the fact that you have to have the curriculum and the teachers in the classrooms and the supports to deliver. And all those pieces are there. And that's what I believe this extension of the budget that you've had is to make sure. And as long as we believe that's all in place, it has to all be there to move that, then, you know, and I can see the data too, so.
Yes.
So thank you for that.
And again, thank you so very much for your time.
Any other questions, comments? Very appreciative of everyone who came tonight. If it sweetens the pot, schools are closed tomorrow if you haven't heard.
Just in case you didn't see me leave and come back.
Yes, you can all do the happy dance as you head out. Thank you very much.
How about our students?
And the students, you guys are welcome to leave. Oh, sorry. Okay. We'll do the graduation policy first.
Thank you.
Graduation ceremony policy.
All right, I'm going to wait for Dr. Ho to come to the table.
Oh, Dr. Ho, get to the table.
In September of 2017, Dr. Tony Evers sent out a memo to the entire state of Wisconsin and asked school districts to evaluate their policies on allowing graduating students to wear cultural adornments with their graduation gown. It's very important for many cultures to be able to wear significantly culturally significant adornments as students embark on that holiday occasion. We have received requests in the past from our students and there has been inconsistent treatment of those requests and we recognize that our, it's, you know, as we started the meeting tonight with the report from the Equity Department and I guess we're kind of closing this session on this policy and a few others, but recognizing the cultural diversity in our schools and being able to celebrate that with our families at graduation. So that was the impetus for this change in policy. We did have the ICSC look at it on Sunday and they can provide any feedback they had, but Ms. Butcher indicated that they were in agreement with the language and the policy. We worked with the high school principals on the policy as well as Dr. Ho with his leadership. We incorporated a few other clarifying pieces to the policy regarding student speech and with respect to the participation and any requirements around behavior at graduation. That's what you have here tonight. I don't know if the students have sat here that long.
Any questions or comments? Would you guys like to weigh in? Any questions or comments, would you guys like to weigh in?
Last night when we discussed this, I don't think anyone in the room was against this change in policy, obviously we understand why it's being made. We just wanted, I think, to clarify, because we didn't know about this policy before, and we just wanted to clarify, like, what the change was, like, if it was just clarifying that these type of cultural adornments are allowed, please, on that note, because we hadn't heard of it.
Yes, and the reason for the fast movement of the policy is that the requests have started to come in from the seniors, and we wanted to make sure that we have the policy passed and a process in place for the principals to receive these requests, and a procedure for being able to approve the requests, and that was the fast movement of the policy.
This way it can be done consistently across the board.
If you really want to look into it, you can go on the internet and look up our board meeting notes, and you can see the actual strike-through parts and the additions that are different. Not that I think you'll want to do that, but you could if you wanted to.
I did send Mrs. Butcher the policy, and I don't know if you guys looked at it last night. Okay, good.
Good.
I think it's also important to add a couple of pieces that might be notable. One of them, for example, is that we made sure to clarify in the, in this proposed policy, that a student that finishes their basic training would be allowed to wear their military dress uniform in lieu of the cap and gown. That's becoming more normal these days, but like, 30 years ago when I worked at a high school, that was not allowed, and so those things are becoming common, we did put that in the policy. So if you approve this, that would be something to be approving of. We've also put in language about establishing a procedure for how things would be requested. So a student would request something from the school, they have a document they fill out, submit, and then that would be approved by the principal, so that's something that would be part of this.
Can you give some examples of the things that are being asked for?
Eagle feathers for our Native American students, is Reeve still here? Our African-American students have a cloth that they like, culturally significant cloth that they wear.
Yeah, there's, typically the ones that we see in Green Bay are the more Native American significance, beating and different things, or different cloths that have been woven, or the eagle feather, or things of that nature, I don't know how many names it would be seen.
Andrew.
So, in there, I thought I saw something about caps, are you trying to take off all of the, you can't do anything to your cap?
Currently, that's been the practice at our traditional high schools. John Dewey has allowed.
They've had a lot on their caps.
And if we did pass this change in policy, they would want to, I'm assuming, probably want to ask for a waiver from that policy for their school.
Is there a reason we, I guess, I just thought the Hi-Mom tape on the graduation cap was kind of just like a traditional thing to do, is there a, you know, has it led to, and of course, there are certain things, if you, I think it would be pretty obvious, if you put on, there are things you could put on the cap with tape that would be a violation of district policy, that wouldn't need a special policy to.
The reason we, so there isn't interest by the high school principals to have mortarboards decorated, I think there's also the challenge of, you know, we want to make sure that the policy is preserving cultural significant items, or items that are religiously significant, but things that are outside of that are, it becomes a little unruly to manage and to look at, to observe and supervise and to do those things.
Dewey's a charter, so they should have a pretty easy time getting a waiver. I guess, I guess, I thought we were taking away something, but we're just codifying something that the larger, okay, all right.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move that forward.
Girls, if you want to go, go ahead.
Drive carefully.
I got a, so Noah, who was trying to stay here to get to this, but it got here too late, he texted me, and he says there's some verbiage that may be confused to say that caps and gowns are not to be worn, so just maybe, just double-check the double negative or something. He didn't say where it is, but maybe there's a double negative or some, or.
Okay, ensuring the educational stability of children in out-of-home care, foster care policy and rule?
Thank you. Earlier this year, the Every Student Succeeds Act was amended to make changes in the treatment of foster students. Prior to these changes, students who were awaiting placement for foster care and were considered homeless students under the McKinney-Vento Act, with these changes to the Every Child Succeeds, I'm sorry, Every Student Succeeds Act, students in foster care and awaiting foster care are now treated separately, and for the most part, they are, their placement and their educational stability is treated a lot like students who are considered McKinney-Vento. There is now a process required for ensuring stability of students and allowing them to continue to attend their resident school or their home school, in a process where school districts and counties need to collaborate in figuring out the placement of students what's in their best interest. We've been working, we've been doing this policy all year, really, that, that's required under the law, we're just bringing forward, we had to finish ironing out a few wrinkles in the contract with the county, the contract has been in place now for a month or so, and we're just bringing forward to the policy and the rule that matches that, the law, matches the contract, and matches the procedures.
Questions, comments? Brenda.
So, what's, so you said they're treated very similarly to McKinney-Vento, what's different?
What's different is now, once you are, once you're placed in a foster home, under the old law, you were not considered McKinney-Vento, so transportation was not available. Now, when you are placed in a foster home and you're stable in the foster home, the school district and the county are supposed to collaborate over transportation for that student, and providing transportation to keep the student in their school of residence where they were attending.
Where they came from, yeah.
Yep.
So, then, I'm on the last page, must be two, there is two C, so if.
Of the policy or rule?
Rule. So if the child continues to attend the school of origin after exiting foster care, the district will provide transportation in accordance with applicable state and federal laws. So, does that mean if this happens, they're in foster care in second grade, and they go outside of our district, because that's where their foster home is? No, no, it's the other way around. So, if they, if they're in our district, and then their foster care ends, how long are we providing transportation for them? It doesn't, I mean, in McKinney-Vento, it's just that year.
Well, what the law says for McKinney-Vento and for foster care is that it can end at, when you are no longer under the requirements of the law. Our practice in the district has been, to the conclusion of that semester, or that school year, to provide stability for students.
Okay, so that would still be the same?
That's correct.
That still could be the same way we do that?
Yes.
Okay, even though there's no time?
The issue is funding, and part of, Lisa's still here, part of Lisa's Title I dollars do go to fund this, and part of the, am I right, Title I? Yeah, yeah, Title I. And part of the county is supposed to reimburse, and when we're crossing district boundaries, we're supposed to enter into a three-way agreement with the other school district, our district and the county, but this can be very expensive. We have been, we've transported kids from Chano, we've transported kids from O'Kanto, it's very, very expensive, and so, as long as, and I see John's, John's staring at me, but as long as we're able to provide this, we will provide this, but we want to make sure that we're consistent with the law as well.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll move that forward. Homeschool admissions policy and procedures for placing transfer students?
We're bringing forward this policy, policy and rule, for a few reasons. One, under the, excuse me, it's late, Title I of the Elementary Secondary Education Act and McKinney-Vento Act, as well as the Safe at Home Act that was recently enacted in the state of Wisconsin last year, there's a number of pieces of information that need to be kept confidential, which affects how we enroll students here in the district, and how we go about those procedures. In addition to that, we have had, as we have an increase in students who are not from this country, we have had some ambiguities here in the district as to where to place students when they come into our district, when they're not coming with birth certificates that match what we believe to be their actual age, when they have never been in a traditional school setting before, high school students who have never been in a traditional school setting and are not coming in with credits. How to place them here in the district to give them the most opportunity to graduate, as well as to be in an age-appropriate class. So we sat down with Dr. Ho, with Julie Seifelt, with Ann and Andrea from elementary, and got some feedback as well from principals, and figured out how to be transparent and how to provide the most opportunity for our students who are coming in, who may not fit the mold of placing a student in first grade because they're eight years old. Anything else to add?
And you're referring to policy, there's also an associated rule, I don't know if you're talking about those at the same time.
Yeah, at the same time, go ahead.
So, the associated rule to go with this policy is really more delineating the steps in the process, and so it's, there's nothing that's been taken out necessarily, it's just been more clearly defined. I think the important part that would be of note is, when we talk about high school placement, that you'll notice there's a chart included there that has a credit range, and our practice has been that we place high school-age students in their age-appropriate class cohort. So what that means is if you're a student new to the country, and we don't know what your credits are, you don't have a transcript to come with you, we would find out your age, and if you were 17, you might get placed as a junior or a senior, even though you didn't have any credits. And you can see how that would be disadvantageous to both the student and to the school district. Once that kid turns 21, they just didn't have the number of years that other kids would have had to become proficient and accomplish credits. And so what we've done is we've identified a range of credits, so if a student comes in with zero credits, let's say, even though they're 17, they can be here till 21, place them as a freshman, which puts them in that cohort of students, and would allow them to work through credit attainment with that cohort, rather than running out of time at the end. So, it's consistent with what a lot of other states do, and it actually is now consistent with what DPI recommends.
Would be disadvantaged to us to do otherwise, would it not? Because if they have no credits, they come in, and we put them as a junior or senior, they don't graduate on time, and then that's held against us.
Precisely, and we've discovered that that has been our practice, and we have been disadvantaged that way.
Hearing none, we'll move that forward. Lastly, student record policy and guidelines for the maintenance and confidentiality of pupil records rule?
Mr. Becker, I asked for this agenda item.
Is this the special ed one?
Student records. Student records policy.
Oh, just the payment one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, I'm sorry, I didn't jump out of the, so basically, my point is just, I think that, I think there's a place for not realizing that we, we charge for open records request if paper copies are needed, or if substantial staff time is needed, and I get that, I don't, and the 25 cents a page, I don't think is a modern figure, I think that a long time ago, they would call it that, I don't, I mean, I, I don't think that a first copy of, a first copy of student records requested by a family should have a charge, that's basically my, my point here. I, I think if electronic copies are available and paper is chosen, that's different, maybe, but I think a first copy of, I think a first copy of student records, we shouldn't be charging families, it's not like it's a significant revenue source, and it just, it just doesn't send the right family-friendly message, I don't think. I mean, is it, is this a problem, or is it just something that, what I'm hoping just happened is maybe there was a records request policy, and it just kind of melded in that the family records request policy copy charge and the open just kind of were, it was just the copy charge, or, do we even know where it came from?
I don't know where it came from, because it's been in the policy since I've been here, but I did look at Appleton, Shrobinon, East of Here, Howard, Swamaco, actually Ellen did this for me, Kenosha, Milwaukee, and Madison, and all of those school districts do charge for cost of duplication, unless the fee prevents the parents from exercising their right to inspect the review of records. Our policy, our language doesn't use that exact same language, but it does indicate that, except as noted otherwise, the district may charge individuals for the reproduction of pupil records. As Andrew indicated, our goal is to not charge families, so for the most part, we do not charge families for records, just like an open records request, when records are made, and I respond to the families reciting what they're asking for, to make sure that we're all in agreement, and make sure I'm not missing something they're requesting. I do include this language, because I think it's only fair to let them know there may be a charge, and then we try and work to get them electronic records. I recently had a request for a very, 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 very large request for emails, it took me probably, I would say, a good part of a week to go through the hundreds and hundreds of emails, and to redact, and to see if they were responsive, duplicates, weeding all of that out. Josh Pachek had to purchase an additional software program for me to do that, because with Google, it was very difficult with the volume, but the new software program that he purchased, we were able to save the emails as a PDF and not print them, so even though it's taking, it took me probably a good part of that week, and then on top of it, Ellen, we did not charge that family for the records. We could have, but we did not, and we receive lots of requests from third-party agencies for student records, and in those cases, they charge us. Historically across, as I said, in all of these other school districts, they're charged as well. So I, I don't know the history of it, Andrew, it's been here since I, I came, but I, we worked very, very hard not to charge families, and the law doesn't allow us to charge them if it would prevent them from accessing records.
Yeah, I guess, it's one of, it's one of those things where, I know we work hard to not charge families, I'm aware of efforts that have been taken in specific cases to get everything electronic, although I would wonder, would we have been better off just using a few hundred sheets of paper and not charging the quarters? I, I don't know, but I, it's a message, it's a message that's sent in a policy, and if we say that, not third-party agencies, families requesting copies of their own students' records, electronic copies are free, and if not available, you get one paper copy. I just, I just think it's the right thing to do regardless of whether, regardless of whether eight other school districts are leaving themselves the option to charge. It's a first, it's a first copy, I just think it's, I just think it's reasonable and the right thing to do, even if usually we find a way around it.
From my standpoint, I would guess there are very few people that ask for the records, their students' records, unless maybe they're moving to another district, and then you can, if I read it right, you can give them a copy, but you still have to send the official copy to the other district, correct?
And our records are all digital now, because we've digitized cumulative files, and so we, we really don't print out, and so they're given the records through secure file transfer, they're downloaded, and then given to the school district, and if the family requests, that's all the family is given.
So you already have it digitalized, so you could just send it to them, so it's a remote point, isn't it?
Well, you probably have a digital copy of, but some, there are some student records that go beyond just what's in IC.
No, everything is in IC, because we've digitized the cumulative files, so everything is in Infinite Campus.
So there's no such thing as a student record that isn't in IC? So there's no such thing as a student record that isn't in IC?
Well, the student record definition is very broad, but records that we transfer to other school districts?
Well, that, right, but I'm talking about a family requesting records, which could be materials that go beyond what's in IC, the family requests.
Yes, there could be, teachers could have files that are not their personal notes that are not in Infinite Campus.
That, that kind of thing, because...
Sure, but the emails are all digital, that would be responsive to a request, so it's, it's very, the amount of paper is very minimal that would exist.
And I just think it sends the right message, and I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a, I intend to make a motion next week to change the policy, so, to allow for one free copy of student records in the event they're not available electronically, so. It was important for, I, I just felt it was important, so.
If there's agreement on that, can't they just put that in? I mean, does it have to wait till next week to make a motion? I know the rest of our colleagues are, I don't...
No, we can't vote. I mean, if we're gonna change the...
We have to change the policy requires about...
Already have it done.
But if we change the policy, we have to vote.
Which I can, I can come back next week with revisions, so that you can vote on that.
That's what I'm asking for, not to come back next week with this and ask for...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That concludes our report.
All right, we'll move to, thanks, Katie. Organizational support, that'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
Okay, so under business and finance, discussion aims, we have none, under human resources, we have none, discussion and public comment, business and finances, we have none, and then human resources, we have benefit recommendations for the 2018-19 plan year.
Just a comment about this, this is the time when we look and recommend to the board what we feel is a increase, if necessary, to our health plan and our dental plan, and so this year, we're recommending a five percent increase to the district plan overall. I put in the memo what, how that would affect a single plan and a family plan per year, and then also no increase in the dental plan, and vision is actually gonna go down, that is a voluntary benefit, and then the timing of this would allow us to prepare the documents and plan for open enrollment, and these changes have become effective July first of 2018. Health insurance, I've talked with each of the union leaders so that they know what this recommendation to the board will be, and they, I think, are supportive of our plans and understand that this cost increase is just a way of keeping up with increased costs that insurance brings to any employer.
Any questions? Okay, so I'll go. So my position hasn't changed that a, that an independent actuarial review should be conducted, I think that we, you know, last year, we were in a position where we didn't have to, well, I didn't have to, where we didn't change, change rates, now we're just taking the same plan and going up, up five percent. I really, I think that when, I think that our consultants give us industry-standard stuff, and I don't, I don't know what a, what an independent actuary would find for, for opportunities. I think we haven't, we haven't had an independent actuary look at our health plan in years. I realize our consultant uses Milliman, and Milliman is the largest firm, but Milliman is being, you know, I think they're probably enlisting, you know, did, did the, did the Milliman tool provide what the average out-of-pocket cost is for families, or how many families cap out their out-of-pocket? So then we're, I, so I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that the records would show that in March, not that I do this anymore, because it's a bad idea, but we did by, I think, general consensus and recording in the minutes, approve an actuarial review, and simply, you know, I just don't think, I just don't think there's enough here to constitute an actuarial review, and I, I think it's, I just think we shouldn't have one. It's a, I think it's responsible, and I think it helps, it would help us find any, any missed opportunities in the benefit plan, and maybe, maybe the actuary, independent actuary would say, yep, I, your plan is the best thing since, since sliced bread, and five percent is just about right, or maybe they would say, did you know that if you did, you know, if you did X, Y, Z, or if you did, you know, there's wellness, there's wellness programs out there that are actually documented to be win-wins that save money. I'm glad that we do one, but it's not, you know, some of these plans, if you implement them, actually save the organization money. I also think that we don't have any kind of, we don't consider, I've heard this before, we don't, the traditional insurance industry does not consider very deeply impacts that may help a person be healthier in ten or fifteen years, because they assume the person will be with a different insurance company or on Medicare, and so when we're working within the traditional system, it doesn't reflect the fact that our folks tend to stay longer than how often people might switch in the private sector. So I just think there's informational opportunities that, that might be lost here, and I think, I think what was agreed to in March, last March, and recorded in the minutes is certainly in the spirit of meaning an independent actuarial review, not calling the consultant and asking them to essentially conduct their own. So when, when would this, when would this have to, when, when would this absolutely have to be done, when would we absolutely have to select a plan to avoid a, a problem?
We need to do this, this month. Last year, we were significantly behind, because we waited until April to vote, and it puts, it puts a great deal of stress on the organization to be able to move forward. We are planning this next year to do a very deep look at our insurance products to make sure that they are cost-effective and that they're very good products, and that's the time when I think an actuarial review independently would be in order. We, right, this year, the rates came in with about a seven-point-something increase, and we felt that we could bring that down, and we could afford a five percent increase, and that is without changing the plan, it's a very good plan, we have very little issues with our employees with it, and we feel that to keep it affordable, this is the increase that we're recommending, but that an actuarial, actuarial review, as well as a deeper look into all the products we offer, would be in order, and we would begin that very soon. It's, it's, it's almost gonna take seven to nine months, I think, to work through all of the changes we might wanna look at.
So why didn't we start, why didn't we start that, why didn't that happen sooner when we talked about at the, there was consensus at the board meeting that we would have it? Why, why didn't it happen? And I was mistaken in the fact that I needed to push a motion to do that, because it had already basically been agreed on. So we're here a long time later, having not had the independent actuarial review, and now we have to go, now it's now or never. Now we don't maybe have time to find out if changing the wellness program would've made this a three percent increase instead of a five, probably not that dramatic, but it could, so...
When you say an actuary review, are you talking about looking...
Yeah, plan design, and, you know, here's, here's some wellness plans that actually have documented money, you know, here you have a wellness plan, here's some good parts of it, but here's one that actually does save you money statistically, as opposed to just, you know, doing a, and I know having a health assessment saves some money versus if you don't, but really, really, that was just something that came very quickly after Act Ten without a whole lot of discussion, and just became part of the landscape. I'll stop there on that part, but I don't know, I could... Why so long?
Agreement was, I don't remember agreement that we'd be actually asking for an actuary study. We had consensus on that, is that what you're referring to, Mr. Becker?
I'll find it for you, I'll find it for you. I'll do it.
If we did, I guess I missed it.
This isn't something you have to, we don't have to vote on this tonight, I'll find out where it is, because I've been spending a lot of time reading minutes of meetings.
These others are there.
March, April, March, something there, yeah, so, yeah, so, you know, there's just, just some things I want to make sure we're taking care of, because you never know what next month could bring, so, but no votes required tonight, so, and it's late, so we can talk about it later. I mean, nothing's gonna happen out tonight.
They use a Milliman actuarial tool.
A consultant that doesn't even understand, they're not actuaries, so they, they may run something through a tool, but one of the tools, one of the tools that they provided to us before was an Excel spreadsheet that they marked proprietary, and it was just a basic Excel sheet with formulas that had no predictive anything in it. It's what we're provided by, and, you know, they, they might be a good consulting company, but they don't have actuaries, and this Milliman tool told us what? I, I have never yet, I have not yet ever known what our average out-of-pocket is, how many people cap out on their out-of-pocket, what happens if we do this to, never. An independent review should not be, should not be something that we're nervous about, it's an opportunity, and when we had, you know, again, post, you know, post Act Ten, when I had, when I had left for a little while, you know, Huddles, the, the neutral, the neutral referee, the actuary paid half by the union, half by the district, Act Ten, gone, right? A system that worked, but let's just, let's just toss it, like a whole lot of other stuff we tossed out in Act Ten. So I think this has been agreed to, we're not gonna hash it all out tonight, we can talk about it between, between now and then, but I, my intent here was to see if I needed to put a motion on for next week about the, about the actuarial review, but I really, I really think we, we don't need to, I don't know if I'll, I don't know what I'm gonna do next week about voting for this, because our, I certainly don't wanna have a rushed actuarial review to meet what was agreed to replace a better one later, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure where I'm at with this, I'm, I'm not suggesting that it's a, as far as keeping the plan goes, I'm not suggesting it's an unreasonable or incorrect increase. I'm just wondering if we have that independent actuarial review, if we maybe missed something creative that we could've been sitting on too, but, yeah. If, if it's not going to happen this week, I would like a date certain to be agreed to, that we would conduct the next one for, for next year and some, you know, with the word "independent" in it, because the consultants, consultants who make mistakes or don't recommend the best thing probably don't go solicit actuarial reports that cause them to say this isn't the best thing. They probably get actuarial reports defined in such a way to support that their findings are, are reasonable. So maybe by next, maybe along with this, I might be able to vote for the motion, if there was a date certain for an independent actuarial review that was also voted on, not consensus on, because we consensus on it a, a year ago.
I think we can come up with a date.
Okay.
Mrs. Marsh, would you sort of add in them if possible? Would you talk to the association and see if they have concerns with any of this, and if they, if so, would they be willing to share the expenses as in a passion, we move ahead with it? Thank you.
They did share the expenses, I, I will talk to the executive director, David Heisman.
That's a diff, I, I think that's a different deal, I think, I think the district lost, I think the district lost asking the association to share it when they, when they threw it out, getting rid of everything as fast as you could after Act Ten. I think you lost, I, I think, I think it would be an insult to ask the association to pay half for something the district agreed to anyways.
Well, we did an actuary review about four years ago, we did use Huddleston to verify whether or not the numbers that we were bringing forward for the increases were, were valid, and they came up with the same increased recommendation that...
Okay, that's, that's good, but it's a very, that's still a very limited review, I'm glad, I'm glad we checked a second source who said it was okay, but that, this could be, there's so much more that could be done with plan design, and I think the consultant, I think our current consultants provide good consulting about very mainstream, okay, we're just repeating ourselves, if we have a date, if we have a date certain of an independent review, comprehensive with, then I might, then I might be able to vote for, for this next week.
We can bring a date.
So I, the concerns that I, the question that I have, and maybe it would be very good for me to even understand what the difference is, because I knew we had Huddleston come in, but I would not have called that a comprehensive actuarial review. Now we're talking about that, I just wanna make sure that, that we understand what the board is expecting in this review, and what that looks like. I mean, I think, Jean, you seem to think...
Well, if, if there's one thing to just have an actuary validate whether or not the increase that you're bringing forward squares with the cost that you, your plan, you know, has had over the past year, and what they anticipate the cost to be. It's another thing to look within the plan, to say, how do we restructure it? And then if we do this, how much will it save, or if we, and that's what I think you're looking at, something more comprehensive.
Especially because, especially because when that was almost considered a couple years ago, they were not able to provide any valid information on what this was really going to do to families, so we did a holding pattern for a year, I supported it, it was the best thing available to just stay the same, and yet here we are a year later, doing another, essentially a, a holding pattern with getting a little bit better than average increase, so good, but I just don't wanna keep doing, whether I'm here or not, I hope that we don't keep doing a holding pattern, so, thank you. Anyone else?
You ready to go?
Okay.
John?
We can't afford a holding pattern in the future anyways. I agree with you, we need to make changes.
And there's changes you can, but there's, there are changes, there might be changes that are, see, when I hear changes, and you go to a traditional consultant, it is raise deductibles, it's cut benefits, there might be other things, but I don't think it'll come from a traditional consultant who, where it might make previous advice, I like multiple sources of information, independent, so. And then there were, I guess I get to do, I get to do this one then.
Andrew, before you read that, the things that I have for contracts, we can postpone for next week, we do not have to go tonight.
Yeah.
Do we need to go on the personnel?
Do we need to go on the personnel? I don't have any... You did have one, but we can...
So we don't need to...
So we don't need a closed session?
Well, wait, we'll postpone it, give you another one, postpone it until next.
Move to adjourn.
You have a favor? I...
Okay.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.